Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December ninth meeting of the governing body. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Mr. Laborn. Dr. Rini.
Present.
Mr. Royble.
Present.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldrich.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Escabel.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
One member is absent. We do have a quorum.
Great. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Well, does anybody on this governing body wish to take an item off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Escabel and seconded by Mr. White. All those in the favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the consent agenda is approved.
Six A, public hearing for a bar and grill liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Rock Ranch LLC, doing business as Nellie's, 4020 Airport Parkway, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
All right, we've got some exciting news. A restaurant might be looking at going into our airport terminal. And so we're having a public hearing now to talk about issuing them a bar and grill liquor license. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak to that ask? Where's the applicant here? Guys want to come up and maybe just share with us what you're doing? Please? You're gonna have to push that button and turn the light on and then share with your name and what you're gonna do. That button, push the button till the light comes on. There you go.
My name's Kathy Brand. This is my husband, John. We are opening tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. and we're Nellie's Grub and Pub. We don't have the pub yet, but we have the grub. And we're really excited about getting started. You would think we're 100 if we told you how many years of experience we have, so we'll just skip that part. We have a lot of kicked up grilled sandwiches, some pastas. What else do we have? Flatbreads, appetizers, and hopefully beer and alcohol would be great.
We'll work on that for you.
Okay.
So what are your hours? What are your hours gonna be?
We're 11 to 8, Monday through Saturday, and then I think Sunday probably just 11 to 3 right now till we get some more employees and...
Sounds good.
Yep.
Well, welcome and thank you.
So we're really excited. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this request for a, or the public hearing for a bar and grill liquor license? All right, hearing none from the audience. How about from the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. I was just curious if we can get an update on how many bar and grill licenses we have left or have available.
I think that's four now, right?
Yes, Mayor Collins through you. This will be our 17th awarded bar and grill liquor license out of 21.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, the purpose of the public hearing has been met. We'll assign this item to the finance committee. So they'll meet next Monday and then two weeks from today, we will have a chance to approve that liquor license.
Six B, public hearing to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming statute 15-1-402 exist for about 0.13 acres of land located north of Cheyenne Street and west of and adjacent to Ridge Road.
All right, we're gonna open up a public hearing, but first we're gonna have a brief staff report. Mr. White.
Mayor and members of council, Connor White Planning and Development Department. There we go. The sanction is for roughly 0.13 acres of land generally located north of Cheyenne Street and west of and adjacent to Ridge Road. The city received a petition to annex this land from the owners, which was filed with the city clerk on October 25th, 2024. This petition was certified by the city clerk as containing the necessary signatures, according to state statute, on October 28th, 2024. This public hearing is being held in accordance with Wyoming state statute 15-1-402A. Person to fulfilling the requirements in state statute, staff asks the governing body to consider the following. The land is, the land proposed to be annexed is contiguous to the current city limits, specifically the property is roughly 75% contiguous. All city services and utilities currently available to residents in the city will be provided to residents of the annexed land. Extending or connecting to water and sewer increases the health, safety of the residents in the area of the community, this area of the community. The area to be annexed is inside the urban service boundary and designated as urban residential by the future land use map. This type of development is best supported by being within city limits and connecting to city services. And a certified mailing was sent to all landowners and utilities within the annexed area not less than 20 business days prior to the public hearing. According to the city's calendar, 20 business days prior to today's hearing was November 6th, and the certified mailing was sent out on November 1st with the earliest confirmed receipt being November 4th. Property owners within 300 feet of the subject property were also mailed notice within the same time period. And there is also an assigned zoning accompanying this annexation ordinance tonight. I am available for any questions.
Connor, is this a request so they can get water and sewer?
Mayor through you, yes. This is a request so this property can receive water and sewer. If you did, when you look at the maps, this is actually in a county pocket, so this would have been on our list to annex. We just haven't gotten to this portion yet, so it would have been annexed within the near future, but they're requesting water and sewer a lot quicker than we've gotten to the annexation.
Thank you. Any questions from staff?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. I'm just curious, so the, it looks like the property to the north of that, the lot to the north, and then it looks like there are four separated by one that is in the city that back up to this property on, that face birch? Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Mayor through you, that is correct. So this pocket, it's a little, might be a little hard to see on here, so the orange square that outlines this on both sides, both on birch and then on ridge, those are pockets in, within those squares.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Laborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you tell me, how easy is it gonna be to get water and sewer to this site? Is it nearby?
Mr. White.
Mayor through you, yes. Water and sewer, I don't know exactly where it is, but I believe either it's in ridge or generally we do have sewer that goes down the alleys, so it is readily available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. All right, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come and speak to this proposed annexation, the public hearing? Hearing none, how about from the governing body? All right, the purpose of the public hearing has been met. Next item, please.
Number seven on page two, ordinance third reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, tracts of land situate in portions of sections four and five, township 13 North, range 67 West, 6:00 p.m., Laramie County, Wyoming, also known as North Range Business Park, located northwest of the I-80 and Round Top Road interchange.
All right, this is ordinance on third reading, annexing the North Range Business Park, which is part of an agreement we made when that business park was first opened, when we offered water and sewer with the opportunity that they would annex when they became eligible for annexation. They currently are eligible for annexation, so it's moving forward. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this annexation on third reading? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Laborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
The ordinance is, or excuse me, the annexation is approved on third and final reading.
Number eight, ordinance third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of LI Light Industrial and BP Business Park for tracts of land being annexed to the city situate in portions of sections four and five, township 13 North, range 67 West, 6:00 p.m., Laramie County, Wyoming, also known as North Range Business Park, located northwest of the I-80 and Round Top Road interchange.
All right, state law requires that when we annex property, we have to give it a city zone, and we have a policy that when we annex property, we establish the zoning closest to what was in the county. And so at this time, we will ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the establishment of this zone. Dante, welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor Collins and members of the council. So I'm Dante Rushton with Cheyenne Leeds, and we'd just really like to extend our appreciation working with the city staff, Charles Bloom, Seth and Connor, in developing the BP ordinance, which we applied to most of the business park. So we had adopted that last month, so we're excited to use that. And again, we're excited for the park to be brought in to the city and we can use those city services for the different users. So again, big appreciation to staff in the whole process with this. Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to the establishment of this zone district? All right, hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Laborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
The established zone is approved on third and final reading.
Number nine, ordinance third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from AG Agricultural and HI Heavy Industrial to AG Agricultural for land located south of Campstool Road and north of Interstate 80.
All right, we have an owner requested zone change this time to create one zone for a parcel, I think in a Leeds Business Park, if I remember correctly. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak to that? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Laborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
The zone change is approved on third and final reading.
Number 10, ordinance third reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, various tracts of land completely surrounded by current city limits, situate in northeast Cheyenne, generally located north of Bevan Street, west of College Drive, and south of Del Range Boulevard.
All right, so the city council set a goal a number of years ago to annex all the county pockets 100% surrounded by the city. And this is the third phase of that. It's 38 properties, and we're gonna open it up to the public if anybody has any comments on this annexation before us. Okay, hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Laborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
The annexations are approved on third and final reading.
Number 11, ordinance third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of MR Medium Density Residential, HR High Density Residential, and CB Community Business for land annexed to the city of Cheyenne, generally located north of Bevan Street, west of College Drive, and south of Del Range Boulevard.
All right, again, that state law that requires us to give those recently annexed properties a zone, we're going to establish the zones closest to what they are currently in the county. We'll go out to the audience and ask, does anybody want to speak to that? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins. Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Laborn. Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
The established zones are approved on third and final reading.
Number 12, ordinance third reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, various tracts of land completely surrounded by current city limits, situate in northeast Cheyenne, generally located east of Ridge Road, west of Whitney Road, and along Del Range Boulevard.
All right, this is phase four of our county pocket annexation. And by the way, we kind of delayed those, so we didn't screw up the county clerk's voting districts, so we put a hold on them, so that's why we have two, I think, at this time. This one's 26 properties, and we'll go out to the audience, does anybody want to talk about these 26 annexes, annexations? All right, hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Seconded again by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the annexations? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Laborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seiggrave.
The annexations are approved on third and final reading.
Number 13, on page three, ordinance third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of AR Agricultural Residential, LR Low Density Residential, MR Medium Density Residential, and MUR Mixed Use Residential for land annexed to the city of Cheyenne, generally located east of Ridge Road, west of Whitney Road, and along Del Range Boulevard.
All right, we're following that state law again and creating zoning that's closest to what's in the county? Anybody in the audience want to speak to that? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the zone change? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Laborn.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
The established zones are approved on third and final reading.
Number 14, ordinance third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from P Public and MUR Mixed Use Residential to MUB Mixed Use Business for land located northeast of the intersection of Mori Avenue and East Lincoln Way.
All right, this is an owner requested zone change to accommodate a multifamily and commercial development. Mr. Swain, did you want to speak to that? I say you stand up, I figured you might.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Brandon Swain, 2856 Timmy Boulevard. Man, it's just been a long ride, so I didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank staff for sticking this out. It's been almost a five-year process. I'm probably gonna skip some folks, but a lot of the good guys at BOPU City Engineering, of course, Mr. Bloom, Mr. Lloyd, Mr. White. Yeah, I mean, there's probably several more I wish to mention, but of course, my daughter, she doesn't have a choice, she has to stick around for all of it, so that being said, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for the developer? Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate you being here tonight. How about anybody else in the audience? All right, hearing none. Oh, is there? Mr. Dorsh.
Good evening, Mayor Collins, members of city council. Dan Dorsh, Habitat for Humanity of Laramie County, also serves as Chair of the Affordable Housing Task Force. I support this zone change. In conversations with Mr. Swain about what he's planning on doing here, I think is fantastic for this part of town. Being on the tail end of the 15th Street corridor and potentially tying into Holiday Park would be maybe a potential spur of development for the revitalization of 15th Street, so I just wanted to say I support this. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here tonight. Anyone else? All right, now we'll go to Mr. Royble.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the zone change? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Royble.
Aye.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Laborn.
No.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
The zone change is approved on third and final reading with Mr. Laborn voting no.
Number 15, ordinance third reading, amending section 8.60.080 Noncompliant Vehicles as a nuisance of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, declaring oversized vehicles as a nuisance, providing for their regulation, clarifying provisions, and making conforming amendments.
All right, I think this is what maybe a lot of you might be here for this evening. Welcome. So we will have a three-minute limit on testimony, and we look forward to having you come up and identify yourself, and whoever wants to be first, we'd love to hear from you. Sir, thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, guys. I'm Donald C. Jones, 4000 Everton, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Some of this stuff I'm, I'm for. I, I think that people parking in front of somebody else's house is wrong unless the neighbor happens to say, yeah, it's okay. But I live where I have Newland on one side, College on the other side, and then Everton Street. On my Newland side, I have over 80 feet of sidewalk there that I'm not parking in front of anybody. I have a 31-foot Class A motorhome, and I know that sometimes it's a nuisance, but I also feel that right now, you can't police what's going on with the current laws that we have, like parking the vehicles backwards. No license plates, no insurance, no nothing on these vehicles. I know that from our shop down there on 1810 Dillon, that we've had this one crazy lady, I'm sure you all heard of her, and it took us three months to get her to finally move her two motorhomes off the street. One was forward, one was backwards, no license plate. She even had blocks under the rear axles to keep the tires up, so it looked like they weren't abandoned. And I know we have a law about abandonment on our vehicles, but I think that the, from Memorial Weekend to Labor Day is not quite enough time. I think that at least till the end of September, because I do most of my camping in August and September, and I'm sure there's a lot of people that do, because your state parks and everything are still open and wanting, requesting reservations and stuff, you know? I think as far as like the apartment complexes and stuff, the owners of the apartment complexes can put in their bylaws about parking in their parking lots. They can say, no parking, you know, campers and stuff, you know, just like they do covenances in town where certain covenances say you can't park a vehicle at all or nothing in front of your house. This five-day permit we can buy, can we buy consecutive ones? Like say, if you do in Memorial Weekend, can I go buy six permits to last 30 days at one time? And that's $90 a month to park my vehicle, you know? Or is it gonna be, I have to go down every week and purchase five days at a time, which is a pain in the butt? I'm not a computer savvy person, so when I go down to sit there and buy permits for our crew with Harold F. Johnson Masonry when we're working downtown, it's hard for me because, you know, getting in and, I just can't hand them the cash or hand them a credit card and say, here you go, you know, fix me up. No, I gotta go to some stupid machine, it's ATM or whatever, and then I gotta try to figure out what I'm doing, you know? And so, you know, I mean, but I think that...
Mr. Jones, we all appreciate the technological challenges, at least some of us up here do, so...
Yeah, you know, I mean, I have a flip phone, you know? I don't have a smartphone, but I just, you know, some of these laws are impassable. I mean, it's, or not impassable, but...
We understand.
You know, and stuff, and I think that the police, local police department, and I think the local sheriff's department, and the local traffic people, I think they do a heck of a good job in this town, you know? But there's so many laws out there that, that they can't keep compliance. It's hard, so...
Mr. Jones, your time is up. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Who's next?
I know you guys wish I'd disappear, but I won't. Joe McCord, 1842 Newton Drive, District 1. Again, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for giving me the opportunity to address the issues pertaining to travel trailers. I hope that this council votes to defeat this on third reading after sitting through second reading and committee the whole and listening to people's concerns about safety for the children and other safety concerns. I find it interesting that they are not concerned about other utility trailers, regardless of size, parked on the city streets. Our city council chooses to go after one group, large travel trailers, when the danger exists with all non-motorized vehicles parking on city streets. all non-motorized vehicles parking on city streets. Utility trailers, box trailers, boat trailers are just a few. I find it more of a safety issue with those amongst our kids parking on the city streets compared to, I've kind of screwed up my reading here, sorry about that, compared to travel tra, my large travel trailers, because kids playing around them can be hurt as well. After spending several days driving all around the city of Cheyenne and neighborhoods on the north, south, east, west, and downtown area, I find that there are almost double the amount of utility trailers parked on the city streets. There are currently a lot of city ordinance that are not being enforced all around the city by current, by the current two nuisance control officers, the community cops and the police. And I don't see where adding a new ordinance is going to help them to be able to enforce the ones that are not able to enforce now. All others, all over Cheyenne, there are trailers and all kinds that are met, that don't meet the current city ordinance with flat tires, travel trailers, parked on corners, parked on sidewalks. They're all over. I realize that there are, I realize that there are real, there is no real solution to this situation, but I feel the large trailer trailers are being discriminated against only because certain people in neighborhoods don't like their size compared to non-motorized trailers within the city of Cheyenne. We have been told that parking our large trailers on the city streets is rent-free. Well, that's not true. We pay taxes, just like the non-motorized vehicles pay parking on the street. One of the other things that come up in the meetings was the concern around the city Cheyenne that don't allow parking on city streets. I don't live in those cities. I live in Cheyenne, and I, and I don't live in an HOA. I should be able to park my, on the street. Cheyenne needs to quit trying to be like other cities and other states. In closing, I would say, this council has been through numerous attempts to amend this ordinance, and it doesn't matter what amendments this council chooses to amend. It's not going to be in the best interest of the constituents with large travel trailers in Cheyenne. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
You did pretty good, Mr. McCord. The time was just right.
Okay.
We're gonna miss you after this. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, this is a big issue for me.
I know. Sir?
Evening, Mayor, city council members. I apologize that I'm gonna be a little bit of an echo here from what I just heard here for a moment, all right?
Just identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Gary Everett. I live at forty-twelve Rogers Avenue. Okay? I agree that there are residents that are storing vehicles of all sizes on the streets. More motor vehicles than recreational vehicles or trailers, be it flatbed trailers, utility trailers, regardless, by far, there's more motor vehicles that are being stored on the streets than there are RVs and so forth, okay? We have an ordinance that doesn't allow us to park within thirty feet of a corner. We have an ordinance that does not allow us to park within ten feet of the center of a street. We have an ordinance that, that says you have to park your RV trailer, you cannot park your RV trailer, or you, I'm sorry, you have to park your RV trailer in front of your home, okay? We have an ordinance that says you have to park it on a suitable surface, whether it be a gravel surface, a concrete surface, and not on the grass in the front of your house, all right? I've heard all these are complaint-based enforcement ordinances. When I take my dogs for a walk in my neighborhood, I see violations for three out of four of these ordinances, every time, every single time. And the only reason it's not four out of four is because I live in a neighborhood that has wider streets, all right? So everything is parked more than ten feet away from the center line, okay? So with all due respect, guys, all due respect, are we just creating another rule that can't be enforced, okay? That's not gonna be enforced equally, all right? Because it will, it will target those RV owners when there's a complaint, okay? Now, and in my neighborhood, I see these things, and it's been like this for a long time. So are we just neighbors being neighborly, all right, and respecting each other? I really wonder that. I don't doubt that there are some people out there that complain to you guys and blow up your phones all the time, but I really gotta wonder if it's the same people over and over, okay? Instead of adding new ordinances and banning RVs on the city streets, how about we consider outreach efforts to educate residents about the existing requirements that we already have without infringing on the rights of the responsible RV owners, all right? Okay. My pickup, outside a mirror to outside a mirror, is eight foot, five inches wide. It's a stock vehicle. I haven't modified it in any way, shape, or form, all right? So now, my, my in-laws come up for a couple of weeks, and they're gonna be here very soon, and I park my truck out on the street so that they can park in the driveway. My neighborhood, my neighbor gets upset about they're trying to back out of their driveway, and now they can't see around my pickup, no different than my camper, all right? And by the way, I've already moved my camper for the winter. It's off the street, okay? But now, they can go ahead and call and complain about my truck because my truck falls within your oversized vehicle rule. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, Gary. Thanks for parking your camper, too. Ma'am.
Good evening, council. My name is Caitlin Wilson. I am in the Sun Valley Extension west of College Avenue, and I have been very opposed to this ordinance restricting oversized vehicles. And while everyone has said it's in the name of safety, I have yet to see the data that all oversized vehicles parked on the street are unsafe. Before anyone else in this room shares examples of how these vehicles have caused visual impairments, emergency vehicle access issues, et cetera, please first think if those vehicles are violating existence ordinance rules as already stated by previous folks. There are a plethora of ordinances regarding safety that could be more heavily enforced. The claim that oversized vehicles reduce emergency vehicle access, I feel like, is, is also a long-shot claim, considering any vehicle could get in the way of emergency vehicles. And if the ten-foot from center line ordinance was enforced, that also wouldn't be a problem. And the fear of children being screened is also not considering that regular vehicles can screen a child, and that folks should slow down driving in neighborhoods anyways. A camper, that's an extra foot wide, extra foot long or tall, is not screening a child any more than several vehicles parked back-to-back along a street. If this is all in the name of safety, then all vehicle street parking should be restricted. But I, of course, am not in favor of any additional restrictions to anyone. I did email the council this week proposing a possible solution that I would consider as a compromise, and that I would consider in support of, and that was to create an annual oversized vehicle parking permit. That would allow only the owner to park in front of their property and would fund the city instead of private companies. It would remove the seasonal summer compromise clause that most of the supporters of this ordinance want, and would likely reduce the number of oversized vehicles on the road since there'd be a barrier to entry, which is, again, what you guys all want, is reduced vehicles on the street. This permit, while not ideal, would only be an annual purchase and could align with other vehicle registration schedules and be less of a burden to us vehicle owners. If the permit was not displayed, then enforcement could be the same as a parking violation. My thoughts were at least a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars per vehicle per year, which I think would be reasonable and would be less than storage costs that I've seen around the city. Before anyone tells me to park on my own property, some of us simply don't have that luxury. And I, for example, have no alley access and have a sloping driveway and cannot safely park a trailer. I do have ample street parking, though, and have used it with no issues for years. I am proposing to either completely do away with this ordinance amendment, or at least consider a small compromise as proposed, which would be an annual oversized vehicle parking permit. This would involve the modification to propose substitute of ordinance eight-six-zero-zero-eight-zero, section B, and removal of B one, and changes be mirrored in ten-five-two-zero-two-zero D one, and modifications made to section F to make that permit annual.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here tonight. Sir, we'll just take turns. Good evening. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Steve Manning. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the developer and owner, operator for the I-25 RV storage facility, which is being built at the corner of College Drive and I-25, just behind the Loves. Just wanna let everyone know that we'll have available parking. We have six hundred and fifty spaces available, a different unit mix, anywhere from twenty-foot spaces to forty or more feet. We also have thirty-six, of our thirty-six acres, we have twenty more of development that we could serve the community as the need grows. I know this was an issue for some of the circumstances in prior voting for where would we put RVs. Just wanna let people know that we will be open in March, and I can take any questions or clarifications, seeing that I'm sure everyone is somewhat knowing that we are developing, as you can see it from the highway.
Steve, we wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ed Belko. A lot of you know me. I've been a rabble-rouser in the past. I, I understand the reason for the wanting to do this ordinance. This is round two-
Mr. Belko, can you do me a favor?
After about, what, twenty years ago?
Mr. Belko, can you bring that microphone up, towards your face? There you go, so people can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, this is round two, after, what, fifteen years, twenty years ago? Anyway, I hear a lot of rhetoric. I don't hear any real solid, any evidence. So let me give you some statistics. My street is Pathfinder. It's a block and a half long, over by Dozer and School. It's forty feet wide. Two campers opposite each other, sixteen feet. That leaves you twenty-four feet. Most driving lanes are eight to ten feet. You got more than enough room all the time for two cars passing back and forth, okay? I went and did a survey today on that two and, on that one and a half blocks. Twenty-three vehicles parked out there this, today, this afternoon, okay? Four cars, five SUVs, which are taller than a regular car, harder to see around, three RVs only, nine pickups, a lot of them eight-foot beds and big ones, two miscellaneous trailers. That's only a block and a half, okay? My camper is a twenty-six footer, but with the tongue, it's twenty-nine feet. Either way, it doesn't fit with your criteria, because with the air conditioner, it's more than ten feet tall. So there goes, there goes your, your criteria for what, what the dimensions have to be. Time limit, Labor Day to Memorial Day. How many of you are hunters or have been? Any of you on the council? Yeah, okay. Hunting season doesn't start till after Labor Day. I typically, most years, will be doing two hunting trips. Now, does that mean I gotta buy a permit before I go, so I can bring it in and, and get it all loaded up and cleaned and prepped? And then, a week later, I get back, do I have to buy another permit for five more days so that I can unload it, clean it, get it ready? And then, three weeks, four weeks later, I go elk hunting in October. Again, same, same thing. Do I need two more permits to be able to have it at my house, okay? We're talking fifteen dollars apiece. I'm retired on fixed income, okay? You know, this, you're talking about a lot of money here all of a sudden. And how many other people would have the same situation, okay? So, again, your permit idea, your Labor Day to Memorial Day, it sucks.
Thank you, Mr. Belko.
Okay, cost-wise?
Mr. Belko, thank you.
Who's gonna pay for, if I had to store mine because you kicked me off the street? As I said, are you gonna pay for that for me?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. But yet, you're gonna mandate that I have to do that, okay? I don't really think that's very fair, especially when you start talking six, eight, hundred to a thousand dollars a year to have to do that, you know? And then, how much is it gonna cost the city to manage this whole process? Giving out permits? Who's gonna measure the vehicles to make sure they comply? All that stuff, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Belko. We didn't think you were a rabble-rouser. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak to you today. My name is Alisa Kristal. I live at six-eight-three-one Morland F. I'm here to speak against the ordinance in its present form. I'm also like to deliver signatures and a petition against this ordinance. If I may pass this on, we have three hundred and twenty-two signatures, mostly from Cheyenne, Wyoming, and comments attached to it, and also a statement of one of the ladies that couldn't make it today because of work. The last page has the QR code, if you would like to see it online. I am opposed to this ordinance for many reasons, but I think there's a very practical problem with it in the way that you define the oversized vehicles, because you define it as either twenty-five long or nine high or seven wide. So it's going to affect many more vehicles than just oversized RVs. For instance, trucks, and they don't even have to be do this. If F-350, which is a very popular model in Cheyenne, is going to be an oversized vehicle that will be banned from the streets in the winter, which seems kind of weird to me, can garf Ford currently has twenty-one inventory, and I will have problems moving that inventory if you vote for this today. Another thing that I'm hearing from a lot of people, "Well, if you can afford a thirty thousand RV, you can afford storage place." Fair enough. I will not argue with that. But because of the way that you defined oversized vehicle, this is going to apply to basically any kind of camper trailer that people have. Now, if you drive around the poorer side of the town, you will see a lot of people living in small, modest houses with just one parking space, maybe for the small Honda Civic, and modest trailers, which will also have to get space for. Those people cannot afford storage. So you're going to price them out of owning a camper, which I think is very sad, because a lot of them, that's all they do. They just want to go fishing over the weekend. And it's even worse than that, because they're also going to be outpriced out of selling their RV, because if you think about it, if a lot of people will decide, "Okay, we cannot afford our camper trailer anymore," they're going to put it out for sale. If you're gonna flood the market with a lot of second-hand RVs and campers, the equity is going to go down. Those people probably don't have the equity anyway. They probably bought it a few years ago. It's in high APR. They're barely making their, their mortgage. So now, what are they supposed to do? They cannot store it. They cannot sell it. This is going to create a real hardship for a lot of people in the city. And they're also your constituents, not just the people that complain about the RVs making the streets look trashy. So I understand, I understand what you're trying to do. There are some larger RVs that not parked properly, properly, and people are complaining. And I think we should target those RVs specifically. So I'm asking you to say no to the way it is written today, to take it back to the drawing board and just draft something that will not have such a huge footprint over all of the residents of the city, and will not create economic hardship for so many people.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate you. Sir?
I'm Tom Fuller. I live at twenty-nine-twenty-three Reed, and that's a corner lot. And I bought that lot specifically twenty-some years ago, specifically so that I could eventually buy an RV to park on the street. It's a small lot, forty-five by a hundred and twenty-five. There's no way I can park an RV off the street. And it seems to me that we're changing the rules in the middle of the game. We have a lot of people here that have RVs that we bought them specifically because Cheyenne, at the time, allowed RVs to be parked on the street. Now, are there RVs parked inappropriately on the street? I have one in my neighborhood that is parked near, near enough to a corner that it's, could be considered dangerous. Mine is in the middle of a block. The only accident that I know of involving that, my RV, was when my RV was hit by an unlicensed driver. So I would encourage you not to vote for this ordinance. I think the safety issue is a pretext, that I don't, I would like to see the statistics showing that RVs have actually caused accidents. I don't think there are any, other than my own. So please, vote this down.
Thank you, Tom. Sir, welcome.
My name's Darryl Frank. I live at two-five-one-seven Maple Way. You know what? I don't appreciate being called a nuisance, because I like the outdoors and I have a travel trailer. Now, with your permit item coming up, I'm less of a nuisance if I give you fifteen dollars for five days, and then I go back to being a nuisance. And with this permit thing, I, I go hunting in October, and I may go in November. How many permits do I have to buy? I have to get permission from the police department, and if he says no, I can't even load my trailer to go hunting for five days. And when I come back, do I drive down in front of the police department and get another permit so I could go home and unload my camper? I wish somebody would explain this. And you know what? I understand the rule for laws, but maybe you need to sit down, really think this out, get information from the public, because there has been very little on the news, in the newspapers, since we only get it four days a week now, very little on television. A lot of it's been misinformation. Also, a lot of us older people, a lot of people aren't even on social media, don't know anything at all about what's going on with this. And it would be nice to be informed, informed correctly, and take input from everybody on this stuff. And I agree with the guy about the statistics for accidents. Kids run out behind cars all the time. Kids run out behind pickups. Where are trailers, the, the number one reason why, you know, for accidents and problems? Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl. Sir, welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Gregory Barrow. I, I live on forty-six-hundred block of East Seventeenth, and I just wanted to come down and support this declining on the ordinance, or not in support of the ordinance, because based on what we've been hearing here tonight, I'm, my, my view is real simple on this. I moved out west here to, you know, realize the Western dream, this beautiful state we live in, and I wanna get out and see it. I wanna go out and travel. And so I got a travel trailer, and it's parked on the street usually during the summer. I'll, you know, park it somewhere else, store it in the winter, but in the summer, I like to have it right there, and I like to go every month to be out. And that's why I moved out here. And I, so I, I kind of think, yeah, okay, when, when, what got me down here was hearing it was such a big safety issue on the social media sites, but then reading in the bulletin there of your agenda, it's more about the nuisance. So if it's a nuisance, I mean, I, I don't think it's any worse, really. Maybe it's bigger, but in these, all these trailers that are parked around the city. But I hope that you can come to some kind of understanding that's, that's give and take a little bit, so that everybody can walk away from this feeling like, you know, it's fair. All these permits and stuff, as the gentleman was just speaking about, I, I think that's gonna end up being more of a hassle than anything. But I just want, want you to consider that, you know, we're a Western state, and, and we love our, our camping and travel trailers, and I wanna get out in it. I wanna have it accessible, not dragging it around to storage lots during the summer. I'm not planning on doing much camping in the winter. Mine's not insulated. But, but anyway, I just felt like I, I needed to come down and, and let you know that, so-
Appreciate it, sir. Thanks for being here. Sir, welcome.
Good eve, excuse me, good evening. I, I own a little over thirty vehicles.
Why don't you, uh-
My name's James Windsor. I live on Hilltop. I have, I've got over thirty vehicles, all licensed, all insured, all legal, and they're not, they're not all at this address. But I have five trailers and two duly Fords. They're all over eight foot. They're work vehicles. They don't get driven every day. And we do an awful lot of work out of state. I work in nine states. So if we're gone, I've got a truck sitting on the, on the street as it gets towed. They're legal factory cars. They're legally plated. They're legal to drive on the road. The Ford Duly's are eight foot, six inches wide. The trailers, utility trailers, car trailers, the double car trailers, they're all eight foot wide. foot wide. And I try and keep a lot of it parked out at Burns at the warehouse, but that don't always work all the time. My camp trailer's parked on the property. That's not a problem. But I don't see how you can say something that's legal on the highway and on the roads is not legal parking front. I live on Hilltop and that's wide enough that people can do 80 mile an hour down it. So I kind of hope it doesn't pass. Thank you very much.
James, thanks for being here. Hi.
My name is Therese Johnston. I live at 6834 Polis Drive in Monterey Heights. I also am against this ordinance and I thank you for your time in listening to me. And I apologize if this has already been said. I came in a little late, but I did call 15 RV storage places this morning, between 9:00 and 10:30 this morning. And I spoke with all of them. Of the 15 that I called, nine have no spots available. One doesn't open until March 2025. The prices on that one for a camper, my size, which is about 20 foot by 10 foot, is anywhere from $69.95 to $109.95 a month. I did my research. Of the five that have availability, there's about 20 spots out there. The average per month for a camper that fits mine, mine is a pull behind, I think it's an average size, is $150.10 a month. I can do a lot with $1,800 a year. Our camper, which we bought late last year for my family, who's sitting right here, that little boy is mine, we paid $5,000 for an over 20-year-old camper. We're gonna be paying 30,000 or 30% of what we paid for it a year in storage on average. 30% of what we paid. And it's not even a nice camper. We don't have enough to pay for a $35,000 camper. We just thought it would be really fun to visit areas of our state. We have the camper parked on our street, right across from our house, right next to a home that's not occupied. We look at it. We take care of it. We maintain it. We winterize it. It would be a real shame to have to pay so much for a camper that my family would like to take vacations on and enjoy our state. My neighbor came to see me and my husband this weekend. He was a previous city engineer and he's in his 70s. He's got a very large trailer on a corner. He owns the corner lot. He parks his right next to his house on the corner lot. And he is so very worried about where he's able to park this trailer. And it breaks my heart to see someone who has done so much for our city and our state to worry about what they're gonna be doing with their trailer. I would just encourage you maybe to think really hard about whether this is helping people or maybe there's just a couple few that we should be looking into. I know that there is a lovely green trailer on story that I would love to see moved because it's hard for kids to cross the street there and to see beyond it, but maybe that's just an exception. Thank you.
Thanks, Therese. Evening, sir.
My name is Wayne Gazinski.
Could you say that again, please?
Wayne Gazinski.
Hi, Wayne.
And I live in Buffalo Ridge. I do own a, I do own a motorhome. I do have a corner lot. I keep it back far enough from the corner that nobody has come to me and complained about me blocking the intersection. You have put a size limit on your RVs and your trailers. Mine is longer than that. So if you're gonna ban mine, why are these others allowed to stay on the city street? They're just as big of a nuisance as mine is. So I'm, I'm against this ordinance and I hope you all vote no.
Wayne, thanks for being here tonight. Welcome, Georgia.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm partially responsible for the ordinance that is currently on the books right now.
Would you please identify yourself just for the record?
Georgia Broyles.
Thank you.
1121 Gettysburg Drive, Ward 3. And some of, some of the people on the council now even supported that. That was really a compromise to help people to park in front of their own properties instead of everywhere, wherever they wanted to around the city. But I received from 2005 to 2015 more calls on this issue than any other single issue in 10 years. They're not here tonight, unfortunately. All we hear tonight are people that are against the ordinance. I'm speaking for the ordinance. This is actually the third attempt of the council in 25 or 30 years to pass something. So this is not new. I think that more time has now been given. I see more storage units now than there were before when the attempt was there to pass this ordinance. I also see things with the UDC, the code, and we have people, a lot of people moving into very small areas of space. How many cars are allowed in front of the apartment complexes and things like that? There isn't room, as we continue to grow our city, for everybody to keep bringing in the recreational vehicles. But again, it's not just them, it's oversized vehicles as well. So we do have more additional facilities. The oversized vehicles ordinance now is looking, is very different in the enforcement mechanism than it was before. And I think that's a positive. I'm understanding from the testimony before at the other committee meeting that this is more manageable and it will be enforceable. We have plowing of snow that needs to take place and the street sweepers to get through. And Cheyenne is our capital city. Many other cities in Wyoming already have this ordinance in place, much smaller than Cheyenne. It's just, we'd like to see it accomplished, this go-around. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for being here, Georgia. Mr. Pulse, did you want to speak to us? Mr. Feiler? Welcome again, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. You guys are probably tired of hearing me talk about the same thing, too.
We'll return the favor in January. Don't worry about it.
I hope you do. I did send most of you, I did miss a couple of you guys on an email this past week. Sorry about that if I missed you. Just explaining reasons why I'm kind of getting involved into a city issue. But anyway, I think a lot of folks here, you know, have some pretty good arguments when it comes to this. I had four phone calls today. I do try to educate my constituency to, you know, get ahold of their city council folks and stuff on these different ordinances, but when they ask me to be here, this is what I'm here for. And I'm here to represent them also, just like you guys are. The oversized vehicle ordinance, you know, like I'll just say it the first time, I think it's still just a bit of a government overreach when we have registered vehicles that we pay taxes on to register and you have plates to use on our highways, our roadways, which I do believe somewhere in statute, I'll get you guys all that statute that says as long as it's a registered vehicle is allowed to park and drive on all roadways in Wyoming. But with that, I, my, I was talking with my wife. We measured her truck. She has a modified truck, but it was bought brand new that way. Her truck would be out of compliance. My one duly work truck would be out of compliance. Sometimes it's on the road for more than three days, sometimes it's not. My camper, I do store my camper because I do live in an HOA and I have no choice. So I have to store my camper as far as that goes. So, but when we look at all this and I heard some testimony that, you know, somebody uses their vehicles for work and a lot of our places here in the city of Cheyenne don't have many parking spots in there at their homes because some of our areas are a lot older and the houses are smaller, the lots are a lot smaller. I think we're, we're drawing a line here that says you can or cannot work in the city of Cheyenne. When if their vehicles are gonna be towed, if they're out of state working or, or have to get permits for their campers every time they come in from hunting. So I just really hope you guys look at, you know, maybe taking this back and looking at all these different issues that everybody's bringing up and maybe bring something back that's gonna help work for everybody. I believe the committee, the whole meeting, there was a lot of confusion on different amendments or substitutions. A lot of the council members here even said that, you know, which part are we on? It's getting all convoluted. So I think if we can just kind of go back and really get this and see if we can't make something that works better for everybody. Thanks.
Thanks for being here again this evening. Mr. Pulse?
John Pulse, Ward 1, 1947 Garrett Street, several other properties in town. This ordinance is an overreach in my opinion, but also, like most people have already stated, we already have ordinances in place for this. Everything that I own personally is tag titled, registered, insured, and parked properly according to the ordinances that we currently have. Everything. It is more than 10 feet from center line. It is all far enough from a corner, but yet you guys are putting the cart before the horse when you have street signs in several neighborhoods that haven't been fixed according to the ordinances we have, allowing cars to park closer to corners. So you haven't even fixed the problems that we have before you go creating more rules to fix problems that we haven't even addressed. Again, it just seems like an overreach and the cart before the horse. I personally, after being targeted over this exact ordinance before it's even in place by Scott Royble, which I still demand your resignation, and I do not accept your apology whatsoever for attacking me in public on a private platform, on a public platform.
Mr. Pulse, let's stay to the ordinance before.
The point is, I'm already being harassed over this very ordinance when it's not even in place. The point is, our community's being pushed out by rules that we don't need when you can't even fix the ones that we already have. You need to put the money and the time and the effort into the proper places before you go making more rules and dragging more people through the mud. I don't feel that this ordinance is gonna fix the problem. Not only that, you're creating more problems for businesses than you are helping them. Not every business can afford to buy property. Not every business can afford to get their trucks off the street. Not every business can afford to build overnight, move overnight, react overnight to something like this. People build things and it takes time. Everything takes time. And as long as you do it properly and you do it by the books and you take the time to do it right, it turns out nice. But right now, things aren't nice. I just spent a week packing my home because I feel I'm being driven out by this. And I'm gonna sell my house in the spring because of this, because I feel targeted by Mr. Royble and by all this. So regardless, I will not agree with this ordinance. I don't agree with this ordinance and I hope that some of you see what other people, including the petition that was put out, has to say about how it's gonna affect your community because it's not just affecting your community, it's affecting the people in it.
Thank you, Mr. Pulse. Welcome.
Kathy from District 1, Deister. My question is, as stated earlier by other constituents, there are existing ordinances that refer to parking, which is 10-52-030. RV issues listed under 10-52-200. Abandoned vehicles, 10-76.010. Why are we not enforcing those ordinances that are already pre-existing? As well as this wording in the current ordinance before you, which many have mentioned, the 25 feet in length applies to many trucks. The seven foot in width applies to many other trucks. Eight feet in height applies to many trailers, as well as already listed. And the exemptions of the holiday, the one holiday you're forgetting is the largest one in Cheyenne, which is Cheyenne Frontier Days. You're exhibiting that you can't have trucks parked on the, on the street. You're considering that most of those vehicles that are coming in for Frontier Days are trucks and trailers and campers and everything. What is the holiday that exempts them? Because that will impact Frontier Days. This will impact contractors. This will impact operational status for 12 months out of the year, depending on which one you're voting on, if it's a substitute or not. As many mentioned, the last meeting was completely confusing on the substitute being re-admitted and everything. I think this needs more consideration for the matter. Thank you, sir.
Kathy, thanks for being here tonight. Jennifer, do we have anybody online? Why don't we go there now, okay?
I have Mr. Alan Sheldon.
Alan, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Alan Sheldon, Ward 2. I've been happy to hear so many great arguments being made against this ordinance. Of course, I continue to oppose the ordinance as proposed and ask the city council vote against it and instead start uniformly enforcing existing code under sections 10.52.020, 10.52.030, and 10.52.200 subsection C. The proposed ordinance creates unnecessary burden on residents who own these vehicles as well as the police and code enforcement staff that will have to enforce them. As others had mentioned, we're living in a Western state known for its outdoor recreation for a reason. Why are we trying to emulate the very places that many people escaped? Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Who's next, Jennifer?
I'm gonna give him just a minute because he took his hand down, but I'm not seeing anyone. That seems to be it.
Last call for the audience, anybody? All right, we're gonna close the public testimony part and we'll go to Mr. Escobell for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the committee of the whole is to approve on third reading, third and final reading, and I so move second.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Escobell.
I move to amend by substitute dated December 4th, 2024.
Second.
Seconded again by Mr. Johnson. Okay, folks, let's talk about this substitute. What the substitute does is two things. It, instead of having a ban for year-round, it allows campers from five days before Memorial Day to five days after Labor Day, if I get that right. I believe I did. And, and then it has a permit system to be able to bring a camper in during the times in between. And so we'll open it up to the public, but what I want to make sure is we're here to talk about the amendment, okay? Not to rehash what you've already talked about on the ordinance, but we have the amendment and we'd love to hear your comments on the amendment itself. So if you'd come forward, if anybody wants to talk about allowing campers for that three months in the summer and a permit system for the off-season. Your name, please.
You know, Ed Milco, currently Ward 2. Recently, I used to be Ward 3 for over 30 years. But anyway, with two camping, hunting trips in the fall, I'm looking at the potential of having to chase around downtown, wherever the hell you have to go to get a permit, and then paying 15 bucks before I go, $15 after I go. And there are times when in November, I will go bird hunting, pheasant hunting with friends, take the camper out for several days and the same deal. I have to get it prepped up, gotta do it after I get home. So I'm looking at a lot of different permits and who in the city's gonna be issuing them? Who's gonna have the ability to do that? How am I supposed to chase downtown every time? What about all the people that work all day? Are they gonna have time to go down during the day to go buy a permit so they can go hunting and use their camper? I mean, you know, it's, this business of having to get a permit off-season is ridiculous.
Mr. Belko, is this better, though, than a blanket ban?
Pardon?
Is this better than a blanket ban on, on oversized vehicles?
I prefer no ban, like it currently has been for the last three or four decades.
Understood, sir. Thank you. Sir?
David Cook, Ward 1. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you just for taking the time to actually just come out and hear and talk with us. As I understood it, originally this was for the safety of the community, but it kind of has turned into a discussion that really seems to put a financial and legal burden on, on the residents. I haven't seen this amendment because all I did was poll what was online for this morning and so this is kind of a surprise to me and it seemed like potentially others. But what I'm looking at is, is...
Sir, if I could, it was passed during the last meeting, the committee of the whole, so...
Well, then I'm looking at it. Thank you, sir.
Yep, no problem.
So then, so then what I see in that current reading then is that this goes beyond just regular, regular oversized vehicles. The way that it's quantified and...
Sir, we're on, we're on the amendment, which is Labor Day to, or Memorial Day to Labor Day and a permit system. We've already discussed...
Then for the permit system, thank you for that. So for the permit system, this doesn't allow for any kind of grace period for me to pull my, my small little utility trailer out onto the street just to do even yard work. It doesn't allow for really just spontaneous needs to use my vehicles in front of my own property. And what I'm... And what I'm seeing here is that for those individuals, the way that it's quantified of what is an oversized vehicle, it doesn't say "and" in all those in regards to width, height, and, and length, is that with it applying to all vehicles that might be eight, eight week, eight feet wide or nine feet tall, that encompasses far more than just my utility trailer. It encompasses many people's trucks. You know, as mentioned earlier, that, that 3500 duly, that's eight and a half feet wide.
Again, sir, we're on the amendment.
And thank you.
You're arguing, you're arguing the main motion, and we've already had that conversation.
So the amendment, I think that it should be struck down, as well as everything else should be struck down. Thank you, sir, and thank you all for your time.
Appreciate you being here tonight. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Caitlin Wilson, again. Um, I think that the being able to park in front of my property during the summer months is better than nothing, but, um, I did propose, in order to semi-compromise there being an annual permit and that being at least less burdensome on these oversized vehicle owners, um, but also trying to understand that there are supporters of this in the name of safety, and at least we could remove those summer months, purchase an annual permit, and be allowed to park in front of our house all year round. I think that.
You've already made that point.
I think that would, in general, reduce a lot of these vehicles on the street. Um, I mean, if that's what the goal is, but at least it wouldn't be a blanket ban. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Folks, again, we have to talk about the amendment. Roberts with Order says, "I'm supposed to keep you to the amendment, okay? So if you start bringing back the main motion, I'm going to ask you to stop, okay? So please, keep it to the main motion, which is, um, or, excuse me, the amendment before us, which is the, um, uh, the, the summer availability to park and the permit system. That's, that's the change before us now." Yes, ma'am. Nope, your turn. Come on. Ladies are always first.
Thank you. Uh, Reese Johnston, 6834 Polis Drive. Uh, when I did call those 15 locations earlier today, I did ask about long-term and short-term parking, as well as what that meant for, um, RV storage. Uh, long-term parking, they give discounts for year-round, um, parking. Uh, I think the, the cheapest one I found was 55 a month. Uh, most of them are over 180, 8250 was one as well. Um, so no matter what, I'm going to be paying for year-round parking if I want to solidify a space. If I, if I want to have, um, my trailer or RV in front of my home, um, for that timeframe, the, the three months that this amendment is proposing, I'm still going to have to pay for this, no matter what. And if I go with short-term, I'm not guaranteed a parking space at any of these locations afterward. There's still going to be a need. Um, and I'm very concerned that, that need is going to drive pricing up for some of this, and I'm effectively just not going to be able to afford, um, to take this RV out anymore and to have that fun with my family. Um, so I think that the amendment, I'm not a fan of the amendment either. Thank you.
Thanks, Reese. Sir? On the amendment, sir.
Uh, yeah, the amendment. I don't think the three months.
Identify yourself, sir.
Darrell Frank, I live in Buffalo Ridge.
Thanks, Mr. Frank.
I don't think the amendment on, uh, just summer parking for trailers is long enough. There's a lot of us that go hunting in the, in the fall. And also on this permit system, if I've read it right, you have to go, the police department has to approve your permit? How long does, is that going to take to do? Does anybody know?
We don't, sir. We haven't set that up yet.
Then, then how are we supposed to respond to that? If I have to get permission from the police department to park my camper, to load it, what happens if he says, "No, I can't go camping"? You're telling me I can't go camping and load my trailer? And when I come back, how do I get a permit to come back at 10 o'clock at night, unload my trailer in front of my house without being? I, I'm not in compliance then. How do I do that? I mean, come up with some, with some answers for all this before you try to ram this down our throats so we know what the heck we're doing and understand what we can do and what we can't do legally. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
He said ladies first. Um, Alyssa Kristal, 6831 Marlin Ave. Um, this is kind of like the elections you choose between bad and worse. Um, so yeah, the amendment is for sure the better than the main motion because it's five days instead of 72 hours, and you have an option to buy a permit to do something for hunting season, but nothing at all. So please, let's do the main vote above the amendment and then strike it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nemecek.
Vicky Nemecek, I am a member of Ward Two. I, uh, as an RV owner and a, um, hunter, I would, I believe that this is a reasonable compromise. Um, everybody's a little bit unhappy and everybody's a little bit happy, so, uh, I would be in favor of the substitute. As the city public works director, I would, um, also be in favor of this because it will help our winter operations for street and alley and traffic and those sanitation, those areas that, um, operate in the winter, um, on the streets when they're icy snowy, those kinds of conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCord.
Joe McCord.
You're going to miss us when this is done, Joe.
Yeah, well, definitely miss you. I am opposed to this amendment. Um, I don't feel that it's a compromise. I feel that, again, this council and certain members on the council are dead set on trying to limit parking on the street, and they're doing everything in their power to try to make amendments to keep it, so that does have something. So I'm totally against it, and, uh, I encourage a no vote again on all of it. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, welcome back.
Hi, Donald Jones. I'm opposed to this fee of this extra five days or whatever. Uh, I see where there's no way you're going to be able to police it. Who's going to pay, who's not? How are you going to know if somebody does pay, who doesn't, you know? It, it reminds me of Laramie, Wyoming, when University of Wyoming turned around, when, if you live within a certain area of the university, you got to pay $15 to be able to park in front of your own house, and that doesn't even guarantee you get to park in front of your own house. And I think it's a burden that it's, it's not a good thing. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Everett, right?
Mr. Everett, Garrett, 412 Rogers Avenue. Um, Mr. Mayor, council members, um, although better than what she originally came to the table with, I don't agree with it. I still disagree. I am a hunter. Um, you cannot, the limit on hunting, camping in the mountains nowadays is 14, is 14 days. There are some places that are 16 days, and then you must take your camper out of the mountains, all right? So you can't just take it up there like we could in the past for 21 days or something like that, okay? And it hit two seasons. Uh, so, um, and, and then we, we oftentimes go into November as well. So, and I know, I, I totally get the, um, uh, keeping the streets clear, uh, so that we can plow and stuff like that, but we don't usually get them storms until, yeah, we always get the freak normally in September, but that doesn't usually happen until end of November, beginning of, uh, or, I'm sorry, end of October, beginning of November, somewhere in there. So although I like it better, I'd like to see that extended if you guys have absolutely got your minds made up and it kind of feels that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everett. Mr. Pauls.
John Pauls, 1947 Garrett Street. On that amendment, regardless of time, what, could you clarify that time again for me?
Five days before Memorial Day to five days after Labor Day.
Okay, regardless of the time, I work 365 days a year. I have several vehicles that are used for several different things because I own more than one type of business, and I park at home because I pay my taxes to be parked on the street. The limitations are seven foot wide, nine foot tall, and 25 foot long. So even an SUV with a small trailer behind it then becomes oversized. That is a lot of cars to be trying to pull permits for or trying to make sure that they have permits. That's a lot of manpower and time. I don't see it happening, even with that amendment time. Not to mention, like I said, I work 365 days a year. I'm not pulling permits all year just to go to work, and the reason I park at home is because that's where I leave from. So if I take my pickup truck and go home and the mirrors are sticking out and it's over seven foot wide, or I got a flatbed on there for the night because I don't want somebody stealing the stuff off the back of it because I'm going to the shop in the morning at the other end of the state, and I want to leave from my house and not from a yard, so I waste an extra three hours. I can't even park in front of my own home? Not to mention, we've already made ordinances for that, but you've already taken enough parking away from residents that if you own a corner lot, you can't even park in front of your own home.
Mr. Pauls, we're on the.
But the amendment, it, it's, it's, it may fix some people's permitting problems for hunting season, but it still doesn't address the working man. It doesn't address anybody that works. It doesn't address anybody with working trailers, your plumbers, your carpenters, your painters, the people that clean up your trash, the pick up your trash, the do holloways. I do that on the side, just for a couple extra bucks because I can't make it on one job. Nobody can these days, unless you got one of those jobs. I mean, that's just facts. Some of us have three and four jobs, and we got to work all three of them, keep them going because we can't get enough hours in one to keep the others going. So these permits, e- even though I don't agree with it 100%, the whole spiel, but the, the amendment's still going to have to be changed to address working people, the working class, the working situation.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls. Anybody online, Jennifer?
Yes, we have Mr. Sheldon again.
Okay, we're going to go to Georgia here and the audience, and then we'll go to Mr. Sheldon. Ms. Royles.
Mr. Mayor, I oppose the amendment. I, I, it'd be nice not to even bother with the permit process. 72 hours is plenty of time if you're going recreating. It's a different situation for businesses, I understand, and business people taking their vehicles home, but for recreational vehicles, it's plenty of time to get it ready or get it back, when you get back to get it taken care of. Um, so I don't think we would need to do a five-day, you know, long time to have them on the streets. This is a safety issue, and it doesn't make sense to say, "Okay, we're going to let everybody have the summer when all the children are out of school, when they're on their bikes, walking the neighborhoods, walking their dogs, when it's nice outside." But you can do that then because then you'll be, it doesn't matter if you're safe or not. I think it's important to, to go year-round, and also most storage places that we're checking out also have, you're going to pay for those anyway. If you want to keep your spot, as you heard earlier, you're going to have to pay for that spot year-round. Um, so I'm against the amendment for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you want to come forward?
Go right ahead, Will.
We'd rather take people in the audience first, or I would anyways.
Nathan Stoner, Syracuse Avenue. I am against the amendment as the permitting system is very vague and has been said multiple times is not provide ample time for getting the permit and being able to abide by the laws and the ordinance. We have a supporter of the original ordinance already stating that they don't agree with the amendment because it doesn't do what any of it was intended for. This is a single-minded effort. The amendment does not make the base ordinance acceptable. I vote against the amendment in its whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoner. All right, Mr. Sheldon.
Yes, thanks. Allen Sheldon, Ward Two. Uh, the substitute amendment is definitely better than the original proposal, uh, but I still oppose it for all the reasons mentioned previously. Uh, in my opinion, this whole issue should be defeated. Uh, I think there's a reason that this issue persists, and that's because a mo-, um, a vocal minority of people, uh, continue to push a safety aspect, uh, that the majority of people accept but don't acknowledge as enough to warrant a blanket ban, and so I continue to oppose this. Thank you.
Jennifer, who do you have now?
I have a Jeff Kay. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hey, good evening. Um, Jeff Kling, uh, Ward Two. Um, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I have yet to hear anything that really addresses, uh, the people that use their trailer year-round, like, um, like my family does. So there's the permitting for a few days and stuff, but just because it's a recreational vehicle doesn't mean it's always used for camping or hunting, um, and those aspects. So we use ours year-round. Um, we like to have it parked out front of our house for safety reasons because we have cameras, we can watch it, and it's there when we need to pick up and go. So, uh, my street, it's a tertiary street, and in the snow plowing plan, it rarely gets plowed, and I think it's been three times in the last 12 years. So if my trailer is parked out front, or if my truck is parked there, there's still a vehicle there that they have to maneuver around, and I'd rather them hit my trailer than my truck in that aspect. So, um, with this amendment, consider those people that use their trailer year-round. Um, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Jennifer, online? How about in the audience? On the, on the amendment? All right, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to the council, the governing body, comments from members of the governing body. Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. Um, first and foremost, on the amendment, um, that's being proposed, um, I did think that the permit process does address the concern that was brought up about, um, Frontier Days and people who are wanting to park a trailer in front of their homes when they have, um, people from out of town visiting for Frontier Days. Um, I know that there was a concern about the permits and, um, having to plan ahead to request those. My understanding is that those, uh, permits would be, uh, similar to the permits that the police department already issues, and so there is a, a system in place that wouldn't have to be created, um, that, um, my understanding is, is it's fairly simplified and it's online. And I, I was thinking, as a person who, uh, is in a family of people at camp as well, is that, I don't know about most other, uh, people that are with us in the audience tonight, but in January, we go online and you have to be like on, on the money to get your parking, your, uh, camping spaces if you want to be like at Kirk Goudy or somewhere, um, and you have so many months in advance that you have to plan to get those spaces, especially those that are in high demand from our neighbors, uh, to the south of us. So, um, well, I think that this substitute does address those two items. I don't think that it satisfies anyone, quite honestly. I think it's, um, it doesn't satisfy those people who, uh, don't want any, um, regulation of oversized vehicles, and I don't think it satisfies those that are concerned about the safety issues. So for that reason, I'm not in support of this substitute.
Anyone else in the governing body? Mr. White.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. I'm speaking in support of the substitute, and the reason I'm doing so is that I really feel that the governing body made a concerted effort, uh, last committee of the whole meeting, last Wednesday, to really listen to, uh, several of the concerns that were raised and attempt to craft, um, a balance, if you will. I know not everybody's happy with it, um, but I think it accomplishes a couple of things. It does grant some flexibility, uh, with regard to the permitting and summer months. Additionally, the substitute, um, would not, uh, make the ordinance effective until September 7th, 2025, uh, allowing ample time for, uh, folks to make arrangements. And, and so I, I thought that the substitute really, ah, did a good job of, of trying to listen to the commentary on both sides that we heard last Wednesday and, um, attempt to craft something that perhaps no one was 100% happy with, but, um, something folks could live with. So I'm, I'm going to be voting yes.
Anyone else in the governing body? Mr. Escobell.
Mr. Mayor, in support of the substitute, it would be complaint-driven, so you go get your camper out of storage and take a couple of days to load it up to go camping or hunting or whatever you're going to do. Uh, the police aren't going to be there watching that. It's going to be your neighbors, and if, uh, they see that that camper is there seven days and they make that complaint, and then the police come over and they say, "Well, we got to complain on this, uh, RV being here more than, uh, the seven days," and, uh, they would probably just talk to. on this RV being here more than seven days, and they would probably just talk to you. And then if it's not moved, and a couple more days go by, and then probably that's where a citation would be issued. So it's not like we're coming around and policing you. It'd probably be your neighbors that would be the ones that would be policing it.
Anyone else in the governing body? Mr. Leaborn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I speak in opposition to this substitute amendment. So it isn't just a single amendment, it's a series of changes. And I think number one is the fact that it really defeats the purpose. It defeats the purpose if you're going to have all three months in the summer, have your ability to park these vehicles, and then store them in the winter, and then get them back out in the summer. I think the real safety concern that I've heard expressed to me many times is the fact that large vehicles do cause site problems. And I think that that's important. I also believe that it's very important, and it's been brought up here a couple of times by a couple of people with different ideas about it. We've got way too many utility vehicles, trailers, people running businesses out of their home, when their home is not authorized and through our processes to run a business. We regulate businesses, and we ought to regulate businesses. And so if someone's running a construction company out of their home, it can have some real disruption to the neighborhood, as I experience on a daily basis. So I think that we should really keep in mind that this isn't just about recreational vehicles, it's about all kinds of vehicles that shouldn't be parked on the street. And secondarily, I think this permit process is very, very difficult to actually work. I think when you're talking about it, and certainly I understand it's on, going to be online, it is something that I, in my opinion, earlier versions of this ordinance had a time limit, which of course is extremely difficult to enforce. But it's better than a permit system that is going to be even more difficult to enforce. I think we have to rely on our neighbors. I think we have to rely on the fact that we pass ordinances that are not rigidly enforced across the city. They're not criminal ordinances. And that those people that enforce the ordinances, we have to rely on their good judgment and communication skills in those enforcements. So I'm against this amendment. I just really can't see where it fits the need that many people who aren't here tonight, but who visit with all of us on a regular basis about their concerns. If you're going to have those vehicles, in this case, I think particularly RVs, on the street all summer, you're defeating the purpose that is people have been working for and believing in for quite some time. So I'm a no. Thank you.
Dr. Aldrich?
Mayor Collins, I would encourage my colleagues to vote no on this proposed substitute. I have a proposed substitute that I'd like to bring forward if this substitute fails.
You want to share with them what it's going to do?
Sure. The proposed substitute that I'm, that you should have a copy of that I'm proposing is that it would remove the, for lack of a better term, the RV holiday from five days before Memorial Day to five days after Labor Day, and make this a year-round enforcement ordinance, as well as it would make it effective July 1st of 2025, rather than September.
Okay, anybody else in the governing body? Mr. Johnson?
Did she, she made a motion to?
She did not.
Okay.
No.
We're still on, on the amendment. Anybody else? All right. Hearing no other comments, all those in favor of the substitute signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
I see the hands of the noes. Mr. Leaborn, Dr. Aldrich, and Mr. Seagriver, noes. The amendment is passed, we're on the main motion.
Mayor Collins, I'd like to propose an amendment, the one dated December 5th, 2024, to this item that would remove the five days before Memorial Day to five days after Labor Day, and make this effective July 1st.
Second.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we get to do this again. So we have an amendment before us that would change what we just voted on, that would get rid of the Memorial Day to Labor Day, and it would basically have a ban year-round. It would still have a permit process for five days that you could get a permit to bring your RV or your oversized vehicle in front of your home, and it would start, starting July 1st, 2025. And so I think we know what most of you think about that, but if you'd like to come and speak, we'd be happy to have your comments, but very specifically on this amendment, okay? Mr. Feiler?
Yes.
On the amendment, sir.
Lee Feiler, 1215 Medley Loop, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I believe this makes it even more restrictive than the amendment that was just passed, going into effect July 1st, which I understand, most statutes that get passed in the state and everything like that, like that usually go into effect July 1st. But I think this was, the reason why it was the other way, was to give people time so they can make arrangements, to be able to find storage for their campers. You know, so I think that just makes it a little more restrictive and taking away those summer months when most people do recreate more often, especially as Councilman Aldrich said, you know, summertime, you know, you want to make those arrangements, and you're going out all the time to summer up to Kirk Gaudi and Glindo and all these other places. So your camper's at home a lot more often than it is in the wintertime for usage. Hunters, it just totally alienated them completely. Hunters, I guess we're just got to pay permit fees year-round to have our campers whenever we want to go hunting. So I just, now, on this amendment, I would, you know, like to, I'm speaking against that amendment. I, I think it's just more restrictive. I don't think we're doing the service of what the people are asking in the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. Feiler. Come on up. Alicia Wright?
Alicia Kristall, yeah, Ward Two. I'm against the amendment, because I think it makes the situation worse for everyone. It also doesn't address a big issue here that of contractors and their vehicles being outlawed in this city. We need contractors in this city. They make the city better. They build our houses. They work on our yards. I don't understand the comments that you're not allowed to run a business out of your house. You're not allowed to have a business where people come in and out, but what are you supposed to do if you run an Etsy store? What are you supposed to do if you're a contractor? Of course you run it out of a house. You can't just hire office space with parking space just because you want to have, because you're a contractor. So I would love to see an amendment that addresses the contractors and how they are affected by this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan McCord. I'm against this amendment. I think that it's ridiculous. I think that the amendments from the committee that we had on the committee, the whole, versus what's coming up now, the councilmen, the council people can't even make a decision on what they want. So this whole thing needs to be reevaluated and put on hold, and I encourage everybody to vote no on this amendment, and also on the ordinance in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Sir?
Thank you. Thank you again, David Cook, Ward One. And so I would say, I would recommend against this amendment, as I feel that it, again, makes it only worse. We've, I've heard a lot of discussion in that travel trailers, toys, all these other kinds of things that we're talking about, but I would, I would turn your, your sites to 8.60.020 paragraph G. That's what we're talking about here. So we're talking about what an oversized vehicle actually means.
Sir, we're on the amendment.
Yes, sir. And I think that it applies to this, and I'm, I'll bring it around, in that now that we are exasperated by the amendment, by making it year-round, the vehicles in this paragraph will be affected year-round. And these aren't just, this is not all of them apply, 25 feet, nine feet tall, seven feet wide. This is your day-to-day citizen. A lot of trucks that, that these, our constituents are using have vehicles that are wider than seven feet. And by this amendment, allowing it to now be 12 months versus, you know, a constrained amount of time, what, if somebody has that kind of truck, what are they going to do? Get a permit to go, to go to work? Do they need to get a permit because now their vehicle's too wide and it's oversized to go to church? Are we getting a permit to go see friends and family or to do anything downtown? And now this amendment would apply year-round. It was already bad enough just over the winter months, but now we're getting a permit to just do your life here in Cheyenne. I mean, I feel like this is a gross overreach by this committee. And I strongly recommend that everyone here votes against the amendment, that my councilmen vote against the amendment, that we vote against this as a whole. And again, thank you for your time.
Appreciate you. It's good.
Hello, sir.
Edward Melko, Ward Two at this point. I'm against this amendment, because what essentially this has become is a permanent year-round ban, period. And then you'd have to get permits all year long, is what it sounds like. Has the city ever tried to figure out exactly how many different vehicles in this city would be impacted beyond just campers? You know, we're talking pickups, utility vehicles, all kinds of stuff. You have no idea how many people you're talking about or how many vehicles, do you? Nobody's ever done a study. I think maybe before they get carried away, they ought to find out what the real impact of making a permanent ban would be on the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson, how are you?
Jones, again. I'm opposed to this amendment. You already just basically passed one amendment, now you're going stricter? I don't understand how that rule comes about, but I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Gary Everett, 4012 Rogers Avenue. I just have to echo that. I can't understand getting more restrictive. I'm completely against it.
Thank you. I love being succinct like that. Thank you. Mr. Pauls, on the amendment, sir?
Yes, sir. Again, until we're blue in the face.
Identify yourself.
Mr. Pauls, 1947 Garrett Street. The amendment, again, it makes it more restrictive, not less restrictive. I don't agree with it. I work 365 days a year. My entire company is run from my phone. Now, when I say I run it from home, yeah, I might be laying in bed on my phone, but everything I own is in a storage lot. But the storage lot's not big enough for all my vehicles, too. It's meant for my equipment. So, yeah, I park on the street because I pay taxes to park on the street that I pay for. This amendment just restricts that even more. I don't agree with it. I don't agree with the ordinance. I don't agree with any of it.
Thank you, John. Sir, welcome again.
Hello, thank you.
Mr. Barrow, East 17th Street. I'm opposed to the amendment. It, it seems like we just took a step backwards. I did notice or acknowledge that the committee here was trying to come up with something that works for everybody. And for some reason, now it seems like we took a step backwards, and it doesn't work for anybody. So I, I think this whole issue needs to kind of be rethought, relooked into, the gentleman that just spoke about a study, to see how many trailers this does impact, or how many RVs it impacts. And, you know, the ones that are a problem in a problem area, parked near an intersection for safety, well, then maybe we need to deal with those vehicles that are an issue. For most, a lot of the streets that are long streets, and the vehicles, I, the, any of them, the trailers, the RVs, I don't really think that they're that big of a safety issue. I think it's more of the nuisance thing that comes to mind. So I just asked the committee to do something that's fair for, for everybody here, not, you know, and, and look at this issue maybe a little bit more, and bring it back up in the future when we've done some research on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience, or how about online? Mr. Sheldon, I'm sure. Mr. Sheldon?
Yes, you guessed it. Alan Sheldon, Ward Two. Dr. Aldrich, his amendment essentially guts the compromise and is actually worse than the 72-hour limit of the original proposal from three weeks ago. So I request that this amendment be voted down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do also have the Jeff Kling, I believe he said, as he was.
I think that's right, yes. Mr. Kling?
Yes, thank you. Jeff Kling, Ward Two. So looking at, this amendment is adding a permit fee of probably around $90 a month on top of the lot fees that we're going to have to be paid. So I say no on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hello?
Tom Fuller, 2923 Reed. I would encourage that the council vote this amendment down as well, because essentially it's doing a year-round again. What I didn't, since it's, since I need to keep it on the amendment.
Please.
And since the amendment incorporates a year-round denial or abatement, I'd like to bring up the idea that you really don't know whether it's a safety issue or not. You really need to have, to study this and to see whether it's really a safety issue. If it's a safety issue, then I think most, many of us would agree that it needs to go into place. But I don't think it's a safety issue. It's a huge issue. It's people don't like to see RVs on the street. It's not that RVs on the street are really a safety issue.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else online? Jennifer? Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We'll go to the governing body. Mr. White?
Oh, no comment.
Okay. Dr. Aldrich?
Mayor Collins, through you. The reason for my proposing this amendment is that one of my major concerns throughout this entire conversation and process has been about safety. I live in Ward Three, and we do have several apartment complexes. And those apartment complexes do not allow recreational vehicles or oversized vehicles in their lots. So it's pushed them out onto, for instance, College Drive. This doesn't address just, this proposed amendment doesn't address just RVs. It addresses all of the initial or original oversized vehicles that are list, were listed in the original proposal. I think we've come a long way. It's not complaint-driven, that, with the permits. We had people have, who've talked about covenants tonight. Those work great if you live in an area where your neighbors respect those, but we have no ability to enforce covenants. Saddle Ridge is full of covenants in my ward, and if you drive through saddle, and the covenant says that you can't park a recreational vehicle on the streets, but if you drive through there, you will find recreational vehicles on every single block parked on the street. We did amend this previously to nine-foot, so height-wise, to accommodate some of those bigger vans. And one of the big issues I think that's been talked about is the snow and ice. You're right, if you're a tertiary street, you may not be a priority for being plowed. However, by having those oversized vehicles parked there, it's, makes it difficult for the snow and ice to melt or to completely dissipate, and makes it much more dangerous for people that are out and about and walking, where those oversized vehicles may cast shadows and keep that snow and ice from melting. So my support of this entire process has been really around safety, and I don't see how making this only nine-month ordinance, which would have, is in the existing amendment that just passed, substitution that just passed, is actually going to be the safest for our community when we have more when we have more people that are out recreating during the summer months, kids out on their bikes and walking and playing in the, uh, in the neighborhoods than, um, what we have currently. So, um, that's my reason, reasoning for bringing forth this, um, proposed amendment.
Mr. Seagrave, did you have a comment, sir?
Yes, sir. I agree with Dr. Aldridge in the fact, and we've heard testimony tonight and other nights, uh, that the vast majority of usage is between Memorial Day, Labor Day, for non-hunters. So, if we're not going to remove these oversized vehicles during the heavy usage, how are you, how are you going to affect, uh, safety? Basically, you're gutting the whole thing by not implementing it during the, the time that it's being used. So, by including, which we just voted on, the, uh, the summer exception, this really has no strength anymore. So, I think we either have to support it year-round or forget it. Thank you.
Mr. Escobal?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, through you, uh, we did talk a little bit about, uh, statistics, and when we did some of our research, we only contacted six of the 15, uh, storage lots and, um, found that there's about 450 RVs currently in storage. If we did nothing, we'd probably have another thousand on the streets. The other thing I wanted to address was, uh, we, there was some discussion about you pay your registration, well, only about 25% of that comes back to local governments. The one on government overreach, uh, we're not telling you, you can't park it on your property. In my neighborhood, I saw eight RVs and seven of them, there were places on their property they could park those vehicles rather than on the public streets. Since then, that eighth one is not there anymore. So, there are other options, and, uh, we tried to come up with a compromise and, uh, I guess it's gonna be all or nothing now, so.
Anyone else? Mr. White, did you want to comment, sir?
With apologies to my colleagues, um, I wonder, looking at page four, section eight, uh, definition of oversized vehicle, I would wonder if the sponsor of this amendment would accept a friendly amendment? And this would be changing the, um, width, the seven feet in width, to eight and a half feet in width? And the reason I'm making that change, and I, again, to my colleagues, I apologize, um, I just found out, or I just was able to find the state statute today, and I didn't write it down, um, sorry, busy day at work, uh, where, it, it's in the Wyoming state statutes that says the width, uh, of vehicles allowed on state highways is, uh, eight and a half feet. And so, I th, I think if, if we're gonna move forward with this, then, uh, the width in, in this amendment or...
Hey!
Or, no, there's, you know, nobody's allowed to come up to the dais, or... Oh, so, I, I apologize, um, folks, but, um, there is, I did, uh, verify that that is in the state statute, and so I think if we are, uh, you know, as long as we're discussing this, the width should, uh, should, uh, relate or correlate to, uh, what the state statutes says there.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. This isn't, has nothing to do with Dr. Aldridge's.
Can I accept it as friendly?
No, you have to make a motion in a second to amend it.
Okay. I apologize and I'll bring it up at a different time.
Okay. Anybody else in the governing body on the, uh, substitute before us? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 May I see the hands? And all those opposed?
Opposed, or, you're one, opposed? Sorry.
Hold your hands up if you're opposed. One, two, three, four, five. So, um, it, it fails five to five. All right, so now we're on the main motion. Mr. White, it would be appropriate if you wanted to make an amendment at this time?
Okay, with apologies to my colleagues and to the folks here, I would like to amend page four, uh...
I think we need to go to the, the substitute that's before us now, uh, because this one failed.
Okay.
So, we'd have to go back to the original substitute.
This is page four.
Still page four, uh, number eight.
Okay.
To change the width from seven feet to eight and a half feet.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. White and seconded by Dr. Rennie, um, to change the width from seven feet to eight and a half feet. All right, just quickly, thumbs up or thumbs down when you come up? If anybody wants to come up and testify, we'd love to hear it from you. Uh, motion to change the width from seven feet to eight feet.
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half feet. Anybody in the audience want to come up and speak?
They've got thumbs up all over there.
Okay. That's perfect. You used the right finger, too, thank you.
David Cook, Ward One, I promise I'll be quick. I appreciate the eight and a half feet, however, the, still, the Dodge Ram, uh, Super Duty duly is still 8.8 or eight feet, eight inches. And so, you're still gonna have residents of this community that drive those types of vehicles. They're gonna have to get a permit to go to church, to go to the school, to do anything around the community, so I oppose.
What I just heard was that was against state law.
That's what it says.
Yeah, it's against state law. Okay.
Where's Mr. Filer when you need him?
Yeah.
Right there.
There you go.
Your first...
New state statute for you to sponsor.
Your first bill, Mr. Filer.
That's right.
Lee Filer, uh, 1215 Midley Loop. You're absolutely right, it is, state statute is eight and a half feet wide, or eight foot, five inches, or whatever it might be. But if you notice, most vehicle manufacturers go by federal DOT standards, not state standards.
New, a new bill for you to sponsor.
Come on forward, ma'am.
Thumbs up on the eight and a half feet. Uh, what would be even better, if you just take that and replace the oars with an N, so eight and a half and nine and 25, so to go for the larger V's.
Jennifer, do you have something online? Please.
Mr. Sheldon has his hand raised.
Mr. Sheldon.
And he took his hand down.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? I saw a lot of thumbs. Okay, how about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor of going from seven feet to eight and a half feet, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Mr. Cook is a no. The, uh, amendment is approved and we're back on the main motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Dr. Rennie?
I also apologize to my colleagues but, and the audience, but I have an amendment also.
What is it, sir?
Page eight. I want to add, this is under, um, 10.52.020B. Um, I want to add a new number six, right before C, obviously. And this starts out saying it's, if you go all the way back to the stop or the top, it says, "No person shall," and then, under B, "Stan, parker, vehicle or trailer, whether occupied or not." Um, so number seven, item seven, would say, "Where any part of the vehicle that extends onto or over any public sidewalk or onto or over the travel lane of a public, any public street."
Dr. Rennie, would you please repeat that?
Um, number, I, I would insert a new number seven. It essentially says that it's, no one may, um, may park a vehicle where any part of the vehicle extends onto or over any public sidewalk or onto or over the travel lane of any public street. And if I get a second, I'd like...
Second that.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we got a motion, um, a motion from Dr. Rennie, seconded by Dr. Aldridge. Yes, sir.
The rationale is, I've, I've noticed this in my neighborhood, that oftentimes people will park a trailer and then they will use their slide-outs and extend it out over the sidewalk or out into the street. And if a portion of this is, you know, if this, the impetus for this was public safety, it is not safe to have those extended onto the pub, over the public sidewalk. It makes it difficult to walk or, or someone to ride a bike along there, and it's definitely not safe to have it extended into the travel lane of the street, so. If you want to use your slide-outs.
Where are you at? What page?
Page, this would actually be on page eight, but the, in the center middle of page eight. So, that's my rationale for the amendment.
Okay.
As we said, it's 10.52.020.
Okay. All right, we'll back out to the audience again. Motion is that we would not allow, um, anything from the vehicle to go over the sidewalk or onto the right-of-way? Did I understand that correctly?
Traveling.
Traveling. Mr. McCord?
Joe McCord, 1842 Noon Drive. I kind of agree with Dr. Rennie on that, but I do have a question as to, there's a lot of people that are getting their campers ready that do have outs, and in the meantime, they put cones out to protect themselves when they're getting ready to go. And this is only for, you know, a lot of them are, like I say, they're, they're usually just that day that they're getting their, ready. So, you need to put a timeframe as to for how long they can be there. Just to be parked there, you're correct, it needs to not be. But to get your camper ready, you can't get your camper ready if your slides are all in. You have to have your camper open so you can do so. And I'll use myself as an example. I open the one side towards the kitchen, I get all the stuff on that side taken care of, then I open up the outside towards the street, putting a cone on each side to get that side ready for go camping. So, you know, it's, and it's not, and then when I'm done, usually the same day, I bring them all back in. So, um, and then when we talk about safety, I'm so sick of hearing about safety. There's no statistics anywhere in this, on this diocese up here with anybody that's gave any kind of statistics on safety for any of the hu, uh, overweight vehicles or oversized vehicles. You know, if you're gonna call safety, give me some damn statistics on it.
Mr. McCord? We're not on that part of it, we're on the ord...
Okay, but that is part of it, because Mr. Rennie taught, brought up safety, and that's part of it. And again, if we're gonna talk safety, let's bring some statistics to it. Does not say safety, let's get some statistics. How many people have been hurt? How many people haven't been hurt?
You've made your point, sir. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Rennie?
Does Mr. McCord have a suggestion on a timeframe that, that a number of hours that would allow him to get his slide-outs ready?
Yeah, I would, I would give it to, you know, less than 24 hours. I'd give it eight hours at the most. I mean, most people don't need very long to get their, their stuff put together and then, because they're, they're gonna do it, they're gonna get their stuff together, they're gonna pull their slides in, and they're usually taking off to go to the mountains. So, you know, eight hours would be plenty, 24 hours would be great, but, uh, eight hours, I think, is very much a, uh, an acceptable time.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ed Melko, Ward Two. I have a problem with that, uh, proposition mainly because if I want to work on my camper, I can't even get from the front to the back inside without first opening up one of my sliders because it covers the doorway that goes to the back half. The one slider comes out three feet, the one that goes into the street. The other slider by the sidewalk comes out two feet. When I've got the slider out, I have traffic cones out, front and back, around the camper automatically. That, that, that's every time. And I only keep them out as long as I need it, and then I pull them back in. So, you know, what happens if during that interim, when I happen to be out there working on it and the slide's out, and somebody decides to come and give me a ticket for it?
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Back here again, Tom Fuller, uh, 2923 Reed. I have a camper with slide-out, and it, it goes towards the street. In the, in the occasion that I have to open that up, I put out cones only during the daytime because it would be a safety issue at night. You cannot see, or you wouldn't be able to see a, a slide-out at night. Uh, so cones during the daytime would be a suggestion I would make on, uh, Dr. Rennie's amendment.
Mr. Everett?
Gary Everett, 412 Rogers Avenue. I ask if we have a ordinance that tells us that we can't be within 10 feet and, uh, already, okay? And then do we have an ordinance that tells us that we can't, uh, block a sidewalk? And I really feel like any responsible RV owner is gonna really watch his RV. They're too expensive nowadays, but at any rate, I'm wondering if we have some, some rules that just kind of guide us that way.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience on the...
Don Jones? You know, I think what you gotta do is, on the street side, is look at the DOT standards. Whenever a semi breaks down or whatever, or you have a flat tire on the highway, you have to put cones out a certain distance, from the back to the front. And I think that if you put that into wordage or verbiage to say, okay, you know, you can't have just one cone, you gotta have two, or you gotta have three, something like that, I agree on, and going over the sidewalk, I agree on that. They shouldn't go over the sidewalk, other than like if you're working on it to, you know, clean it, something like that, but in daytime hours only. Thank you.
Sir?
Can we amend it?
My name's, my name's James Wenzinger. I just would like to have a little clarification. If a truck and trailer, if I got in the morning and I leave, come back, I have 72 more hours after I come back, right? I don't? I leave for work and I go down Colorado and come back. I can't park it for 72 hours.
When you're looking at this, I don't see it, do you?
Sir, we're, uh, we're on the amendment to talk about, um, not going over the sidewalk or extending into the street with light slides.
Yeah, I just want clarification, it's, uh, how that law reads, or how you're trying to make it read.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sheldon? Sir?
Yes, Alan Sheldon, Ward Two. Um, I think the amendment's a good idea, um, but the way that the language, um, was kind of stated, I wonder if it should be revised to prohibit that slide-outs be extended except for when actively being worked on, rather than, um, exactly how it was proposed, which I think could be misapplied in neighborhoods. I think somebody mentioned, um, the 10-foot-to-center rule. Yeah, I think that's what they were alluding to. And I also got that sense that, um, you know, that may, that language may actually kind of conflict with that, um, as well. So, that's just my, uh, my opinion there. Maybe as is, it would be okay, but that's it. Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience? All right. Dr. Rennie, did you want to modify your motion to include the daylight?
Yeah, I do, but the, it's been made in second, it's, it belongs to the body, so if it passes, then yeah, I do have a quick amendment as far as time.
How about from the governing body?
If it doesn't, there's no use discussing it.
Comments from a governing body on Dr. Rennie's amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? May I see the hands of the noes? Mr. Seagrave, Mr. Cook, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Escobal? The amendment is adopted. Dr. Rennie?
Mr. Mayor? I would like to amend 10.52.020B now seven, to after the last part of the sentence where it says, "Travel lane of any street" for a period of no longer than eight hours and only during daylight hours.
Second.
All right, Dr. Rennie made a motion, Mr. Escobal seconded it, that the motion we just passed would be limited to an eight-hour period of time during the daylight. Comments from the audience? Jennifer, anything online? Mr. Sheldon?
Uh, yeah, I support that.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? How about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hands of the noes? Mr. Laborn, Mr. Cook, this amendment is also passed, and we're now back on the main motion. If I can read my... motion, if I can read my scribbling correctly. Comments from the governing body? Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins for you. Well, I recognize that this has definitely been a work in progress, democracy is messy, I mean, there's just no way around it. So, I appreciate all the input we've had from our community and from all of those that are not here this evening, over the last four or five weeks that we've been doing this. While this is not what I would consider in my mind, my ideal legislation, I think that it shows a work in progress and a compromise, and so for that reason, I believe it's a good start, and I'll be supporting this this evening, because something is better than nothing.
Anybody else in the governing body? Comments? Dr. Rini?
Sir.
Okay. All right, hearing no comments, Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Dr. Rini?
Yes.
Mr. Royble?
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mr. Escobell?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laborn?
No.
This ordinance is passed on third and final reading as amended with Mr. Cook and Mr. Laborn voting no. Why don't we take maybe a five-minute recess, let the room clear, and we'll get back to our agenda, thank you. Out into the street?
Out into the street and over the sidewalk, so a child riding his bike and bike on the sidewalk.
And yet you live in a neighborhood that doesn't allow them.
Don't you walk into it, I thought, you know? If I was driving close to that with my truck, I'd get it.
Well, if it violates the ten-foot law, you could just call it in.
Yeah, but it's a lot of white.
It is, you're right.
You, you're allowed to camp, to park your camper, you're allowed to park your camper from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
At least it's a start, right?
It died.
When people get used to not having them on the street, they'll...
It died.
I think we should...
Well, I've got, I've got facts, I've got eighty percent of the people that live here support this.
Like I said, twenty-three vehicles on my street, and probably, there's probably a couple of pickups that would be discounted as well as RVs. We're talking eighteen other vehicles that are blocking the view from the sidewalk out to the road.
Yeah, but most, but most of those don't block street signs and speed signs and...
We're not talking that.
Yeah, we are.
We're talking about safety, with kids running around the street and stuff, coming out behind the vehicles.
We're talking about visibility, being able to see.
But even, even your SUVs have a ten-foot city block sign, because they're taller.
Some might, some might. This is the first...
The city is full of vehicles on every street.
As Dr. Aldrich said, this is the first step, it's messy, they can all, a future governing body can look at it.
You know, I've never believed that something better than nothing is good, never, because it becomes permanent. Something always winds up as something better than nothing, and that's the end of it.
Okay.
I've been, at my age, I'm eighty-three years old, I've seen too much of this shit over the decades, you know? And I, and I know what happens. And this, this is what's gonna happen in Cheyenne, too.
Maybe. Kylie.
The ones that I follow that post, I'm a person that calls them.
You know, part of this is complaint driven. And the other thing, too, is they have a bus driver, it's an active running vehicle, yeah, they're not even parked there, bikes and, and then when they're stored, we store them out by Walmart on, is it South Side? Yeah, Livingston, yeah, they have a whole yard there, nothing but their... We have many recreation events designate zones in public areas that are eligible for park, or for camping, and then, and then committee discussions. How was it that the directors all took today off? Is that convenient or what? I wanna see you, Mr. McCord, next, next Monday. But a lot of those are unlicensed, unregistered, and we've been, we've been cleaning them up, but... It's a, it's a challenge to find the money to pay for that. We've, we've added, we own from eighty-nine to a hundred firefighters, we have ninety-eight to a hundred and twelve police officers, that's where you've been putting our money. Now, it is... We're, we're gonna hire two new compliance officers in January. We put them in the budget, but the budget got killed, so we had to delay this, but we'll get them in January. And they're specifically designed to work on the homeless issue, is exactly what you just talked about. No. That's the stuff we're gonna go after, yep. So I have two full-time people, that's, that's gonna be their full-time jobs. Thanks for being here. All right, I gotta bring this meeting back to order. Poop? It's gonna be fun, I'm looking forward to it, it challenges.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's find our seats, please. Ladies and gentlemen, let's find our seats, please, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number sixteen, ordinance, third reading, creating chapter thirteen point thirty-two Stormwater Runoff Management System of Title thirteen, Public Services of the Municipal Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, establishing the Stormwater Runoff Management System, imposing a user fee for necessary funding, and repealing obsolete provisions.
All right, as the title says, this is an ordinance that would create a new division within the city limits, or our city government, to help us manage stormwater runoff. We have a pretty robust system, but no money to be able to take care of the maintenance and to improve upon it, and so at this time, we'll go out to the audience and see if anybody's here to talk about that. Mr. Bradshaw, welcome. How are things at the airport?
Good, sir, thank you. Good evening, everyone, my name is Tim Bradshaw, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as your Director of Aviation at the Cheyenne Regional Airport. Today, I'm here actually asking, and actually, no, I'm pleading with you to postpone the adoption of this resolution. We'd heard that there was rumor, discussion about this stormwater fee, but we really weren't, were not involved too much in a discussion about the stormwater fee. And so, we're probably the, one of the largest entities in the city with impervious services, and I just found out today that that's a three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar fee for the airport each year. And you all see our budget every year, you know, we don't really have the funds to pay for that. We, we've done the best we can to help the city in regards to stormwater. There was a project several years ago where east of Converse land was cleared for the Dry Creek Basin as well, too, so I just ask you to, please, give us a little time to maybe have a discussion with the, with the city engineer or whoever's in charge of this position here, that, give us a chance to talk about it a little bit, because it's a huge impact for the airport, and we just don't have the money, that's three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year for the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
Thank you.
Mr. Paytoner, did you wanna speak?
Kevin Paytoner, twenty-two oh nine Tranquility Road. I currently, I've been on the board for over fifteen years and currently serve as, as the Chair, and I just wanna echo what Tim said. I found out like at four o'clock what the impacts of this fee would be, I'm not against it, I understand your responsibility and that we have, like you said, Mr. Mayor, we have to find ways to pay for our infrastructure, I get that, and the airport wants to be part of that, we don't wanna be part of the problem, but we just don't understand the formula, what's impacted, how we'll be charged, how we'll turn around and have to charge back our customers, which are primarily, the majority of our revenues raised through rents on, on the airfield and off the airfield, of which the city rents from us. So we'll have to go back and reconstitute some of those agreements and figure out how we cover this, this new charge, and again, we just, finding out two hours prior to this meeting just hasn't given us an opportunity as a board to discuss that, and there will be, we'll be coming back to the city, because again, it's just a little bit of history, the airport board operates, maintains the airport with no help from the city or the county. If, if like Tim said, if we can't cover that, we will come back to both the city and the county to ask for operating funds. So it, there, there could be, you know, again, indirect implications of this and how it's charged to the airport, so I'd ask that, again, as Tim did, that you just, we postpone this, or at least give the airport the opportunity to meet with the engineers and talk about what the formula is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else here? Ms. Lloyd.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Seth Lloyd, I live at two zero nine East Fifth Avenue in Cheyenne, Wyoming, speaking here as a resident. My younger brother lives in a city in Idaho of a equivalent size to the city of Cheyenne, and they had a flooding event in their community. The city of, that, that city opened up a channel that was supposed to take on floodwater, but the flood, the channel was overgrown and not maintained, and it flooded homes in that area, including one of my brother's good friends. And they lost a lot of material and had to do a lot of cleanup based on that, and so I speak in favor of this concept and in favor of doing my, my fair share, I'm more than willing to do that, but if it was just me paying, I don't think my few dollars every month would go very far. So I'm in favor of this amendment generally, and I, I, I understand the concept and the reasonings for it, and I do have personal experience that makes me want to make sure that, even though my home is unlikely to be flooded based on its position, I don't want others to have to go through this just because we didn't maintain something, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Who else is here to speak tonight? Good evening, sir, thanks for suffering through our meeting so you could speak tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman and Council Lady. My name's Ken Richardson, I live in the Trails End Mobile Home Park, which we've all become familiar with over the past year, I think. I represent the owners and residents of sixty-five homes in that area, and most of them are elderly, disabled people. We have the lowest HOA rates in the city, I believe, and I still have some people that can't pay those. I've been required through our attorney to put liens on homes... I've been required through our attorney to put liens on homes, and we have to wait till these people expire, pass away, and then we have a lien on their home and we can get our money at that time. And this extra expense, I'm not even sure what it would be, we cover quite a large area there in the city. We couldn't afford to pay it. I, I'd have to raise the, the rates, monthly rates, HOA fees on these people. And they couldn't pay it. We couldn't pay it. So I ask you to think about people like us that live in the community and what impact it would have on us. I understand we need to... I don't see a timer, but I understand we need to, uh, maintain what we have, I know what Crow Creek looks like down there right now. And... I don't know, but please think about people like us and what impact it would have on us. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Richardson. Kathy, right?
Kathy, with the same area as my president just spoke with, um, the HOA, I'm the Vice President. I'm asking, um, with a management concern, uh, we have current, um, culverts. Would this fee actually manage those culverts that go directly into the creek? Uh, because currently, they're not being managed or opened or cleaned. So that would be another concern, as well as one of them mentioned, um, I think, as well as it should go to a vote of the people as a concern, so they can address it as well. I do agree with that there needs to be some sort of action. Um, again, uh, the vagueness on, um, what is currently being done, as well as like how it's going to impact homes that are right next to already current runoffs as well. Um, just ask for consideration on that, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, John.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, somebody who's worked with the air, airport, moving stuff, doing things and, and events and stuff like that, um, I, I can see how the cost would be horrendous, to say the least, um, at that amount. And I know that the cost goes up for the taxpayers, is there any, um, I guess, assistance we could, as a city, as we are not the only ones that use that airport, with the National Guard and the Air Force and everybody else flying in, or any taxes that we could imply as the city to subsidize some of that spending and some of that cost? That's my only question.
Thanks, Mr. Paulson. Anybody else in the audience or online? Yes, Jennifer? Mr. Sheldon? Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Mr. Sheldon?
Weird, can you hear me, huh?
We can, just gotta unmute theirselves there, there you go.
Yeah, it was weird, I unmuted, then it muted again. Uh, let me just find my notes here, 'cause I was actually writing on a different one here, uh, there it is. Um, yeah, so Alan Sheldon Ward Two, um, I agree that this project is necessary, but I oppose the ordinance tonight and suggest that residents be allowed to vote on the issue. I also agree with some of the, um, comments made by the, uh, airport representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, do you have any others? Anybody else in the audience before we move to the committee? Alright, hearing none, I'm gonna go to Mr. Escobell.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the committee, the hold is to approve, approve on third and final reading, and I so move second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Layborn. Comments from members of the governing body.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Layborn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a long overdue and very difficult issue. But I would urge everyone to consider what's happening in this country, in this region, in our, in our adjacent states, uh, with the flooding that is happening. It is quite a bit worse than when we first started working on this issue thirty years ago, but there's just no doubt that those storms and what we're experiencing right now these past few days is a drought. And when that drought breaks and the storm happens, the effects are mind-boggling. And I go back to what was a, uh, pretty, pretty big event back in nineteen eighty-five with the great flood, but it's gonna be worse than that. This is really where we look at, and we have looked at in a very public process here, with a series of meetings, uh, about this and a series of efforts. Work sessions on our, uh, you know, the committee. We have really had the, the Engineering Department look at and develop a program that is defensible legally, and I think financially. This will be an impact to all of us, it's because all of us contribute to that storm runoff. It might be a case of a detention pond. A detention pond still contributes to that choked channel. And I'm sure many of you don't really spend much time looking and thinking about those choked channels on Dry Creek, the growth that we're gonna have to have happen, the, the projects that we were looking forward to. And by that, I mean the two specific parks along Dry Creek, uh, Kiwanis and Rotary. They're very important elements of, uh, this project, because we really can't build them without better management. And I would point out that the airport has special federal emergency management areas of concern, because of the fact that the airport sits, sits up on top and contributes. And certainly, um, I'm aware of the efforts that have been made in the past. This is an overall citywide effort that is defensible in every way. And I think that if we stop and start over again, we're gonna find it to be very difficult. It is something that not only the city of Cheyenne, but other states and Wyoming have looked at through the association municipalities, I worked with them. It is a question of the ability of us to invoke fees. And so we do invoke fees. We invoke fees, uh, to the airport for sewer and water. We invoke fees for everyone for sanitation. This is a fee for basic protection of the entire community. And I think that all the work that's gone into it, certainly, um, anyone had any opportunity to come and talk to us about it. It is not a secret. It's been underway for quite a while, it's been a goal of ours for quite a while. So I speak in favor of passage. And it's an unfortunate reality that we have to confront all sorts of costs, whether it's in our personal lives, our business lives, or us here on the council, of expenses that are significant. I don't deny that this would be a significant expense. I do point out that the airport is a special problem, as recognized by the Federal Emergency Management Authority, and that we all must contribute to this. And I, I particularly wanna mention this to my friends at the Trails End Mobile Home Park. It's been mentioned that there was, uh, drainage considerations weren't maintained, that's a big part of these issues. It is a case of many detention ponds, and this isn't a detention pond, that aren't maintained. We don't, we can't maintain them, we don't have a continuing funding source. So we don't really know how they're gonna work in that major flood event. And I would point out that the Trails End Mobile Home Park adjacency to Crow Creek is certainly an area that, uh, would experience, uh, some real devastation when that creek is, reaches its max. When we look at Dry Creek and Crow Creek, they really seem quite minor, don't they? But the watershed above them and the contributions throughout the city create a situation that is a matter of fact, that has been documented by the City Engineers' Office, that we have a major, major concern here that can only be addressed by a continuing funding source from the people that benefit from that fee. And we all benefit from that fee when that major storm comes and we don't have massive devastation across the community. So I speak very much in favor of this. I do recognize it is not easy. It is not, we have searched and tried over the years, various means of continual funding. We've got a lot of grant funding that we've used wisely. But overall, it's got to have that continuing maintenance funding, and that can only come from this fee. That's been proven over the years to all of us on the council. So that's why I urge us to act tonight and take this step to the protection of our community, because if we don't, and we start picking it apart and start thinking that some way we're gonna find some magic fund, it hasn't happened since nineteen eighty-five. We have absolute factual information from our Engineering Department on those concerns. Anyone can, anyone that wants to can look at those areas of concern on a map, we, no secrets there. So sometimes it's time to make a difficult decision, and I think that's the case we have before us tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Aldridge.
I recall answer you, I had a couple of questions, the first being, I'm wondering if, um, someone can explain how, how this is, how it is calculated on mobile home parks? If individual, uh, homeowners are paying for water and sewer, then I'm guessing that it, it's calculated basically on the impervious or the hardened surfaces, including the, the, like patio or parking area and their trailer home, not necessarily, I don't, I don't know, or the streets are divided?
Mr. Cobb, could you answer that question?
Yes, Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldridge. Yes, ma'am, so it'd be the, the area that we considered, the hard-packed surfaces, or in this case, we changed the definition, but impervious areas, so the trailer itself, the concrete slabs. So one, thing to be clear is, like, the landscaping rock and such in residential areas is not counted, it wasn't intended to ever be counted. So hopefully, that clears that up. And that would be based on whoever the bill would get. If the, if the HOA gets the bill for the water and sewer, 'cause it's gonna come inside the water and sewer bill, if they're billed individually, it's gonna go to the individual, if it's billed as a whole, then it would be billed to the whole. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's what I wondered was, uh, how that was handled with an HOA. The other question I had was, I know that we do pay a rent amount, uh, to the airport that has come through the Finance Committee each year, and I recognize that, you know, if, if the airport is included in this as it's calculated to be, that our rent will probably have to increase, it's the cost of doing business, right? So I'm just wondering if we have a dollar amount of what we are paying currently, the airport, every year for rent?
Brenda, do you have that number by chance? Oh. Do you have that, Mr. Bradshaw?
I can give you a round number.
We like round numbers.
Okay. So currently, you, you rent the weed and pest control building, the compost area, and the ball fields.
Right.
It is way undervalued, it's like five cents a square foot, it should be about thirty-five cents a square foot. So right now, you're paying about sixty grand, and maybe Vicki can testify that, it's about sixty-one thousand dollars a year. But it's, it's, uh, undervalued, which goes against our grant assurances with the FAA. We're supposed to get fair market value for that land, so it should be more like thirty-five cents a square foot.
Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw. Ms. Nemeczek?
Vicki Nemeczek, Public Works, that is correct. We, uh, have a four-year contract with the airport. The first year, the rent for those, uh, places are a total of sixty thousand dollars. We're in the, the second year, they were added two percent, two percent on to that again, and then two percent again for the fourth year. So those are all set at this point.
Thank you, guys.
I also just, um, I understand my colleague's concern from Ward One, and I, I would agree. I have had many constituents who have reached out to me about the Henderson drainage and our inability to be able to maintain that, just because we haven't, I mean, a variety of reasons, but a lot of times, it's financial. Um, and I've been past the, um, is it called Pando Park, up on, between Central and Warren, that, uh, when it rains really hard, it actually fills all the way to the top with water, um, over the tennis courts and all of the landscaping and, um, things, which is quite a sight to see. Um, I, I think that there is a, a need for this, um, work. I think that Mr. Bay and Mr. Cobb and everybody who's worked on this, and the interns, I believe, that we use to identify all of these areas that we have, uh, not been able to maintain over the years, um, have done a good job of documenting that and making the, the case for this. Um, my only concern i- is that, um, anytime we're going to impose a fee that is not, um, that people are gonna have to pay regardless, because of, um, that they don't have a lot of control over. It's not like they are choosing, you know, um, not, you know, not to, uh, put water out, um, and, you know, that they could use all of it and not have any runoff or whatever from their area, or their yard. I'm always hopeful that we would include them in that, um, process and in that voting process, because I believe that educated voters make the right choices. For that reason, I'm going to be a no tonight, but it's, um, simply on that principle, not on any of the reasons that I'm opposed to this project.
Mr. Seagriff.
Mr. Mayor, through you. Item sixteen that's before us now simply creates the system. If, in effect, it creates the department that would run and manage this. Item seventeen, the next item, creates the fee. So if something needed to be delayed, I would suggest it be item seventeen. However, I think it's important for you to understand that this would not start until January twenty-first, or January first of twenty-twenty-six. So you would have a full year to, um, evaluate the process, the, the system and how you would, how that would impact you and how you'd be able to fund that. And honestly, um, you know, if you have to come back to the city for our portion of it, I think we owe that. So, um, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of it. Uh, we've had, this will be our fifth meeting, fifth meeting hearing on this. Uh, it's been out there, we've had lots of testimony on it. Uh, the need is unquestioned. Uh, last year, we did a Dry Creek study and, and the, the, the need is just phenomenal. I mean, just, just dredging those out and getting the, the growth out of the, of, out of the two creek beds is a massive undertaking, very expensive. Uh, before we ever get to the culverts, before we ever get to the four-hundred-plus detention ponds that have never been maintained, uh, or very little main, maintenance in their lifetimes. So, uh, one good rain, uh, would wipe out our downtown, it would wipe out our main retail district. I have no idea how many homes would be impacted, but a lot. And, uh, as Councilman Layborn indicated, we've put this off for decades. Every city council has talked about it, I'm sure the county commissioners have looked at it. No one's ever acted, and it's time. So you've got a year to figure it out, and if you have to come back to us, I think we have to honor that. So I'm going to be a vote yes tonight, thank you.
Any other member of the governing body wanna speak to this? Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, as, as time's gone on and I've looked at this, I have to say, I do have, I do have some reservations. Again, I agree with my other colleagues, I mean, it's needed, but when you look at the, the bill for the school district is two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars, and having known somebody that used to be in... And having known somebody that used to be involved in the school district, I don't think the state's going to make that up for them, which means programs are going to have to get cut somewhere. I, as, if we vote this in, we have to understand, with the airport, their obligation will be $320,000. They run at $100,000 profit, which means they will be in deficit spending, which means that, you know, either they're going to come back and ask us for money at some point, or all, or they're going to have to raise rents on, on us and the guard to make that up. So, I mean, we need to understand that and we need to be willing to make that up out of our budget for them if, if, if it comes to that. So as I said, everybody, there are ramifications and some of it are going to come back on us. So in a year, when they're asking for money in their budget or raising our rents, those of you that are still here, I hope will, you know, understand and go along with it.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Laborn?
Well, I'd point out that certainly none of us here are interested in harming anyone And the fact is that public entities collect taxes and then pay their expenses. Those expenses include sewer and water. That's a fee. That's a fee that we manage and put to a rate that guarantees the future. It is, it is, it might sound like a lot of money, but look at the entire school district budget. Think of the impervious surface that they contribute and think of what would happen when that massive storm event happens. And I think we have to be realistic about the fact that they happen more often and they happen more intensely. And this will begin to give us the ability to clear those channels, to manage the process, and there is literally no other source. And of course, also what will be a factor is that grant funding will be relentlessly pursued, and this can be the match for that. But overall, we have to protect our community, and we have to do it tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments from the governing body? All right, hearing none. We are on third reading, so Madam Clerk, I'll need you to take the, the vote.
Mr. Laborn?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Royble?
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich?
No.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Escobell?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading with Dr. Aldrich voting no.
Number 17, ordinance, third reading, specifying the monthly stormwater runoff management system user fee in accordance with section 13 dot 32 dot 050 of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
All right, this would be the establishment of the fee for the stormwater runoff management system. And we'll go out to the audience, if anybody in the audience wants to speak to that fee. I think it's .0024 per square foot of hard-packed surface, if I remember correctly. Welcome back, Kathy.
Kathy, District 1. Question on the fee, is it going to constantly exponentially increase as Board of Public Utilities is allowed to increase?
Ma'am, there will be a, a cost of living option that will be brought to the governing body, and they'll have to vote to choose to do that or not. But yes, there'll be an option to do that as time goes on.
Okay. I think that's my main question outside of the other issues that I addressed earlier. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this? Jennifer, Mr. Sheldon on the line?
He's still here, but he does not have his hand raised.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Hearing none. Mr. Escobell, may we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the committee, the whole, is to approve on third and final reading, and I saw a move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Laborn. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson?
So I wanted to hold my comments and tell the fees and kind of going off of what we've heard from the airport and the school district. Me, I live on a plateau, and so I'm like Mr. Lloyd, that my house will most likely not be affected, but I'm paying into the utility. But looking down the street from Sixth and knowing what the flood of 85 looked like in Sun Valley, I'm paying the fee for my neighbors that I know are going to be impacted by this. Yes, I understand that budgets are going to have to be adjusted and things, but if this major event actually does happen, I'm sorry, but 360 mil, or $361,000 here and there doesn't count to the billions of dollars that are going to equate in the damages that if we do not take this seriously and actually pass this. So I would rather be a counselor on the front end that actually was proactive and did something about it, instead of whenever that major event happens, like it did in 85, that all of a sudden, it's like, why didn't you do anything? And so I'm paying my part for my neighbors as well as the people on Broken Wheel, because like I said, I'm on a plateau and looking, and this is, you're not under the Laramie County water map, you're actually in the FEMA floodplain. And looking at the map on this, I'm paying for you because covered wagon would be completely underwater, and it literally looks like three quarters of Broken Wheel towards I-80 would be underwater. So when it comes to the fee, I'm going to view, when I see this come on January 1st of 2026, knowing that I voted for it, I'm actually paying for you.
Anybody else in the governing body? Dr. Aldrich?
Mayor Collins, through you. I also live, actually really at the top of a hill. The likelihood that I would ever receive flooding would be pretty minimal. But I do think that, as Councilman Johnson stated, this is something that I, I really would encourage us not to think about exempting anyone from this fee, whether it be the airport or the school district. Again, it's the cost of doing business. It's something that has to be taken care of, and I don't think it's fair for local residents to bear the burden of the cost in order to let governmental agencies or nonprofit organizations be exempt. I think we all contribute and everybody needs to pay their fair share, and it's the cost of doing business, even if that means that going forward, that we're going to see an increase in our rental rates or our fees to other entities.
Anybody else in the governing body?
Mr. Mayor, through you.
Mr. Escobell?
Through our work sessions, we heard that we have about $30 million worth of backlog infrastructure on the stormwater side. So we're not even talking about the freshwater side and the sewer part of the infrastructure backlog. We have about another 60 million there. So it's quite a nominal amount of money that this city's going to have to come up with in the future to take care of those infrastructure needs. And then that's why I would support the fee.
Ms. Seagrave, did you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, one final thing. During our process, we discussed the city of Colorado Springs. They had not managed their stormwater system, and the Environmental Protection Agency fined them multiple, multiple millions of dollars and put them on a 20-year build-out. I can't remember the exact number, but it was well in excess of $100 million by the time they paid the penalties and did the 20-year build-out to correct their system. So I'm not saying that the, the federal EPA is looking at us today, but they might be. Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, or do you guys have that number that they hit for the MS4 violation?
Just one second, we're looking right now.
It was in the hundreds of millions, if I remember correctly. Why were they looking? Anybody else in the governing body? Well, I wouldn't look any further, guys. I wouldn't worry about it. Madam Clerk, I guess we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laborn?
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Royble?
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich?
No.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Mr. Hertz, yes.
Mr. Escobell?
Aye.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading with Dr. Aldrich voting no.
Number 18, ordinance, second reading, amending subsections 6. And 6.9.4.e of the Unified Development Code, UDC, changing building facade design requirements for multifamily residential development.
Should we have a time limit? When the battery dies in the microphone, we have to stop? All right, this is a UDC amendment that would modify the materials required for the facades of multifamily housing. This summer, we passed it for affordable housing, and now the effort is to, to bring it back to all multifamily. At this time, we'll go out to the audience to talk about the ordinance before us. Dan, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, members of the city council. Dan Dorsh speaking to you as the chair of the Affordable Housing Task Force. The amendment before you is the original amendment that the Affordable Housing Task Force was in, that had in their final report in October of 2022 to the city council, not the one that was initially sent to you last year from the Planning Commission that did away with all requirements. This is simply the, the original text amendment to eliminate the 30% brick and stone requirement, but still have a category of materials and variations to choose from. So I appreciate, I appreciate council revisiting this and support this. It's not, you can still use brick and stone if you want to, it's just not mandating the use of it. It will help lower costs. And also to point out that when it says multifamily, that also includes four and five, six, eight unit developments too, not large apartments too. So that could add more cost burden to those smaller developments as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate you being here, sitting through our meeting. Anybody else in the audience? How about online? Okay. Mr. Royble, may we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve on second reading failed the Public Services Committee. Therefore, there's no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Seagrave?
Thank you. We heard testimony in committee. I, I asked staff to, to give us the answers. Since we implemented the affordable portion of this, no new projects have applied. There was one existing project that came back and reapplied for about 40 units. On the non-affordable side, we have upwards of 600 units being built. So I'm arguing that there's absolutely no need for this. We've already covered affordable housing. It's in effect, and except for that one project that came back and reapplied, no other new projects have come forward. And on the other side of this, we have the major complex, Jolly Rogers, the new one, the second phase of the apartments behind Walmart. We have the 100 units downtown that have agreed to upgrade their existing, even though they don't have to in the downtown zone. So I think we made the right decision, although I didn't agree with it a while back, where affordable housing does have this exception, but there's absolutely no, no need for it in the marketplace. We have a robust apartment and multifamily housing that can, can live within these bounds. So I would urge you to vote this down. Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Seagrave, I'd just like to share with you, the reason we've had no affordable projects is because WCD hasn't approved any in Laramie County, or at least in the city limits since we passed that ordinance. But I will share with you, I did have a, a builder talk to me this last week about wanting to do a light tech project, but using the 4% rather than 9%. And, you know, is, is excited about this, so on the affordable side. But the timing of those, it's going to take a while to get the next light tech project approved, and that's the reason it hasn't come up yet.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also point out that during our election, a number of us appeared in front of the Southeast Wyoming Home Builders Association, and there wasn't, there wasn't a, no one spoke in favor of building affordable housing. They didn't see the need for it. It didn't affect their businesses. Even if we pass all of these things, I, I don't see a local builder that has the interest of building affordable housing. I'm putting air quotes on that. They have a, they have a robust market where they're at, and they're happy.
Comments from the governing body?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Laborn?
Thank you. Your mention of the Wyoming Community Development Authority, have you had communication with them that the reason that they have not funded such a project is related to issues such as this? Or certainly, that's the original intent of the WCDA, and certainly, we're very interested in seeing affordable housing happen, but how that specificity comes into play, I'm, I'm curious about, so.
Mr. Laborn, I can share with you what I know. The state of Wyoming gets $3.1 million worth of low-income housing tax credits, the 9% tax credits for the whole state. And so the city of Cheyenne typically gets a project every couple of years. They just funded Robbins Point, which they're now under construction, next to Hawks Point, which is on the, kind of where Lincoln Way and Nation Way comes together in that area over there. And so we haven't had a, an applicant that has successfully been chosen by the WCDA for Cheyenne. I would expect in the next, next round that comes up, we'll probably see a bunch more applications and it'll, and again, you have to spare that, that money around the state. We'd probably, we'd probably get another project here in the next year or so. But it's just because they're such limited dollars, they have to spread them around. And so we get, we get a project every 18 months, two years. And so we just got one, and so I think it'll be, it'll be the next cycle probably before we get funded, if we have a good quality project.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Forgive me if I don't remember the name of the other agency when you and I were discussing this over the summer, that when we had our meetings with the Cheyenne Housing Authority. So does it strictly have to go through the WCDA or that other agency that Cheyenne Housing Authority brought up that was offering, you know, comparable mortgages and things like that? Are they allowed to do this, or does, is it strictly WCDA only?
I think what you're talking about is the first-time home builder, sir, and the Cheyenne Housing Authority has a program that competes with that. But those are like single-family homes. What we're talking about here is multifamily, income-restricted housing, where a person, maybe at 60% AMI, would, would rent an apartment that would retail for $1,600 regularly. They might get that rent for like $650. And so the low-income housing tax credit buys the, the mortgage down, so they pay 70% of the cost of the mortgage so that people can afford, or the landlords can afford to rent at much below market rate prices. And those only happen once a year. There's a funding term, and they're very competitive, and it's statewide. And again, my experience has been, we get a project every 18 months or two years, if we're lucky. Mr. Royble, did you have a comment, sir?
No.
Okay. Dr. Aldrich?
Mayor Collins, through you. I used to live over off of Loomis Court, and when we were first married back in 19, oh my gosh.
Don't say it.
1980. Yeah, a long time ago. And there are a lot of fourplexes over there that are now privately, my understanding is they're now privately owned, that were low-income housing, but they all have, I believe they're almost all blond brick with some siding. But I, one of the things that I'm thinking is that, especially with affordable housing and multifamily housing, that sometimes the, the longevity of that housing can be impacted by the building materials that are selected. And with, and I, I just, and maybe this is a personal bias, but I believe that brick and stone tend to last longer, and all of those units are now owned, I think privately, and are being rented out to families in that neighborhood along, also along Fifth Street. There's a bunch of them. And I just, I guess my thought is, is that when we know when we know that these are going to be, need to be around for a long time, I'm concerned that maybe some of the alternative housing or siding options may not be as durable and may not withstand the wear and tear of multiple families moving in and out. There's a pretty big churn, I think, in affordable housing.
No question, that's true. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Rennie?
Mr. Mayor, I, you guys can either thank me or blame me for bringing this back. But I think that, obviously, I think we made a mistake when we didn't approve it last last year. There were so many changes, a lot of confusion. I think that may have contributed a little bit to its failure. But if you remember, our planning office had a had a poster out in the front entryway that had like five or six different apartments around town pictured. And the one that everybody liked the best was in the county, and it didn't require didn't require stone and didn't require masonry. We were often compared to Fort Collins, and with Fort Collins supposedly being a more attractive place to live, and they don't acquire require stone or masonry. You can do an attractive building that has the that has some contours to the to the outside of it, so it's just not a flat surface. So it can be designed, and it can be look good, and it doesn't have to have stone and masonry. That does add to the cost. We're always giving lip service to affordable housing. I know that one of my colleagues said that, yes, we might we might reduce the cost of of building something by removing the stone and masonry requirement, and we might reduce the cost to the developer, but there's nothing that says the developer won't keep it. Although I think my my point was proven with so many apartment buildings going up, I think competition's going to be fairly fierce. And I think you will see a reflection in reduced costs or reduced rents wherever possible, just to keep keep apartments filled. So I think we should give this a try. I agree, I want to see quality development in Cheyenne. I've never thought that all development is good development. But I also think if we can do something that still looks good, yet reduces the fees, we should give it a try. So I would urge all of you to support it. Thank you.
Mr. Seagrave?
Just one final, Mr. Mayor. And I was I was the colleague that said there's no guarantee that these savings would be passed on. The builder, the developer will be the winner here. We have approved reduced standards for affordable housing. This, the housing that we're talking about is not considered affordable. It's market, and we have lots of it going on. These these requirements have not stalled it in any way. So I would urge you to vote against it.
Mr. White, did you have a comment? Dr. Rennie?
No, sir.
Okay. Looks like we're ready to vote. We're on second reading. All those in favor of the U D C amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
May see the hands of the noes. Mr. Labor, and Dr. Aldrich, and Mr. Seagrave, the ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number nineteen, on page four, ordinance second reading amending chapter two point sixteen point zero one zero of municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, requiring the city treasurer to annually evaluate and report to the governing body any outstanding debt owed by the city owed the city by any board, council, or commission member.
I like that this doesn't say mayor, so that's good. No, I'm teasing. So this is an ordinance that would ask for a report that would talk about the city indebtedness by any council member, member of a commission, or a board, so that we could decide whether or not that that was a person we want to continue to have serving. Anybody in the audience want to speak to that? Hearing none. Dr. Aldrich?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. White. I apologize, Jennifer, I missed you, so we'll go back to your your caller. I should have looked, my fault. Is it Mr. Sheldon?
Mr. Sheldon, would you like to speak?
Yeah, it was all right. Yeah, Alan Sheldon, Ward two. I actually just wanted to speak in support of it. So, pretty simple. Thanks.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you. How about from the governing body? Mr. Johnson?
Just to segue off of what you said, yes, because we had had reports of individuals that sometimes had substantive fines, that had been reported by our, that had gone through the board process. A lot of the board commissions and council people that are on our agendas, we've never even had the chance to meet. And so this is just one more kind of background fail-safe that the applicants that we're receiving are actually the most qualified and don't have, whether that be a building permit that's owed upon, a sanitation bill, a water bill, a parking ticket, and or any of those types of fees. And so it's just another vetting process to make sure we're getting the most qualified applicants.
Anybody else in the governing body wants to speak to this? Hearing none. We're on second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number twenty, ordinance second reading amending chapter eight point six eight, camping on public property of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, expanding the general prohibition on camping to all public property of the city, creating a permitting process, making conforming amendments, and repealing obsolete provisions.
All right. This is an ordinance that would repeal and ban camping in public places, kind of following the Grants Pass, Oregon model. There are some provisions to allow like Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts to get a permit to be able to park or camp in some of our public areas. We'll go out to the audience. Does anybody want to talk about banning camping in public places? We had a lot on the agenda for you tonight, Kathy.
Yes, sir, sorry. Kathy, District One. I have a question on clarification on eight six eight dash zero three five in regards to what areas you're allowed to get a permit for. As stated in the prior meeting on the Public Service Committee, I believe the vote was no action, but I did not see clarification on on how that was. I know Parks and Recreation did make a statement about how Absaraca and Brimmer Park are already allowed to be camping in. I don't know if you are adding the verbiage on the specific areas. All the current statement is, is that the city permit office is responsible for allowing a permit of ten days. Wondering on what those locations are, as well as the forty-eight hours that has come back into the ordinance for the, you could camp for forty-eight hours on on warning on section eight six eight dash zero four zero, section three, where we're allowing the forty-eight hours to come back, as well as section E in, or section F, sorry, where a person's property is kept for forty-eight hours, as well as the wording within, sorry, the wording within section C, where you're going to kind of tie the hands of delegations. I don't see this in this wording in any other ordinance, where you're considering the situation for for the violation of the ordinance. Just wanting clarify clarity on those issues, as well as making sure that it's not like an open camping area, like everything's open for litigation. Thank you.
Ms. Boster, do you want to take a shot at some of this? I think the ordinance does allow a permit to camp anywhere in public, right?
Mr. Mayor, through you, I would direct the, Stephanie Boster, Cheyenne City Attorney. I would direct the council to the bottom part of page one and the beginning of page two on the proposed ordinance, which is eight six eight oh three five subsection B, which gives the Director of Community Recreation and Events Department the ability to designate locations on public property that are appropriate for camping. So that designation will be made after the ordinance is enabled. And then moving on to the comment regarding the forty-eight hours, that provision was in effect. We just added a parentheses for forty-eight hours. And I would invite the deputy city attorney to jump in as the drafter of the ordinance. But we did keep section F, which deals with the keeping property after an emergency abatement for forty-eight hours before destruction.
So Kathy, the forty-eight hours didn't change. The only thing that changed is if we have to do an emergency abatement, we will hold on to this stuff for forty-eight hours. And then if it's not claimed, we'll throw it away.
And then the changes to section C, where your your section C, Prop B, where you, after receiving the citation, the less full engaged, concerning why the person has committed the violation. I don't see that wording in any other ordinance where you're considering why the violation has happened.
Are you talking about the fifty-dollar fee?
Yes, underneath that, where it says any person found in violation of subsection may and be section defendant demonstrates or receiving. And if this was the issue of why they had committed the offense, I'm wondering on the wording on that. On why it was it was put into this one, but it was not put into the original ordinance of the camping on Crow Creek.
And Mr. Mayor?
Madam.
Through you, Stephanie Boster, Cheyenne City Attorney to the governing body. And I would invite the sponsor of the ordinance to jump in if you would like to. But this provision comes from Grants Pass. Generally, the city uses their general penalty, which is the seven hundred and fifty-dollar fine or six months in jail. Rather than do so, the policymaker, who is the drafter of the ordinance, has decided to go the way of Grants Pass.
Did that answer your question, Kathy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
All right, thank you. Mark Moody, Ward three, Good News Mayor, members of the city council. Definitely support a camping ban. However, just a couple of questions. Page one, eight point six eight point oh two five, it says prohibiting people on public sidewalks through your alley. I just don't know if that should be more of a trespassing, not so much a camping, just because, again, when you're doing that, it's more of a trespassing aspect rather than a camping aspect. And then it was just talked about by Kathy, eight point eight six eight point oh three five, kind of leads a slippery slope. We already have agreements for Frontier Park in the softball. As mentioned, the Public Services Committee, I'm just afraid this will lead to, say, a, you know, slippery slope where, oh, I can, you know, pay to camp here. I understand it's up to our Public Services Department. However, it could lead to that slippery slope where maybe permits are handed out, especially if they're a low cost. So this is something to really think about. And then also, when I was looking through this, I actually went, going back now to page four, actually, excuse me, page five, if you look there on item C under eight point six eight point oh three oh, for the penalty aspect, I mean, I understand that, but however, it then says if defendant demonstrates after receiving a citation for the hearing, they mean if he engaged with public or private resources. In our republic, that's a separate, that right there is having legislative go with judiciary. In our republic, we have separation of powers, executive, judiciary, legislative. So I just don't understand why it's in there. From the Public Services Committee, I heard there actually is nothing like that in any ordinance, where the judge has to take mitigating factors. That's up to the individual judges, based on what I've learned. And then under eight point six eight point oh four oh, when I was looking there, the forty-eight hours, it was mentioned, just something to keep in mind, that if it was to be cleaned up, a lot of these sites have needles. You know, that's pretty dangerous there. So we got to really think about that as well, too. I think that's great. Definitely, we need this, but it's got to be heavily amended, you know, in order for the community to accept it, just because, again, of those aspects I just explained. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak on this amendment? Or, excuse me, on this ordinance? All right, I hear none. Mr. Royble?
Let's see. Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve on second reading failed at the Public Services Committee. Therefore, there's no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve.
Second, excuse me, second. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Comments from members of the governing body? Dr. Aldrich?
Councilman, no, sorry. Mayor Collins, I just wanted to make a comment. I know that there was a question about the, whether it should be a trespassing versus a camping for doorways and sidewalks. And I have encountered several business owners who commonly come to work and have to ask people to move so that they can unlock the door to their business, because there are people that are camped out in their doorways or in their, around their outbuildings on their property. And so I believe that in those cases, that that is camping versus trespassing, especially when you look at, as Councilman Johnson and I were visiting today, in, you know, when the original piece of camping on public property was passed last summer or last spring for the Crow Creek, a lot of those individuals now have moved out into various wards, whether it's in Ward Two behind Sam's Club and Lowe's, or whether it's in Ward Three, or they're moving out into areas where there are businesses and entities that do, where they're constituting camping versus just trespassing. So I would encourage us to pass this. I think this is an important piece that will allow us to be able to, or not allow us, but allow community record events to be able to offer these permits and be able to also charge for the fees that need to be charged in order to clean up after groups leave and people are no longer using that site.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. So after Public Service Committee, my original idea was that, but Jason disproved pretty much everything in regards to my hypothesis, in regards to Absaraca and the thirty-six hour. But after the committee ended, he actually came forward and said that this was a very good ordinance structurally, because it was something that C R E had kind of been looking into in regards to parks around the community or public spaces around, that now they actually had a chance to designate them. To my chagrin, and to address Mr. Moody's, you know, conversation, yes, I would have preferred, you know, somebody that was impoverished to stick it to the man for fifteen dollars to camp in a creek bed. But Jason, once again, being the one that creates this, saw differently than me. And so he actually was going to take this job very seriously and actually, you know, create the zones where it was appropriate, establish the fees. Director Fountain, you know, stepped up at committee as well to, you know, address the concerns that we already currently have in regards to any hazmat materials that we may encounter. And then on some of the other parts, the chief of police actually spoke out at committee as well, stating that these were, you know, in regards to the trespassing camping question, that because this was now an ordinance, they had something that is a little more tangible to do enforcement instead of just shooing them onto the next doorway for them to fall asleep. And as far as a policy decision, when I originally brought this forward, and since this is after the Supreme Court ruling, the, or excuse me, Attorney Brody actually said, Richard, there's probably some some changes that we could make after the Supreme Court decision. And he goes, since you're the policymaker, would you mind, you know, if I look into other actions that took took place from the Grants Pass Supreme Court decision? And as the policymaker, I did advise that it was probably best to go back through and review the Supreme Court ruling to see if there was something that we could, you know, manage, since that, you know, why I voted originally no on Eighth Amendment grounds, that now that was, you know, put to rest. And so that was my decision to direct the city attorney to take another glance at Grants Pass, since it just recently went through the courts.
Mr. Royble, did you want to speak?
No.
Anybody else in the governing body? Mr. Labor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to state, of all the things we deal with, and there are tough issues here tonight, I don't think there's anything as difficult as people who, desperate people who are living on the street or in the creek or elsewhere. It's ever-growing, incredibly difficult. But I do believe that it's very important, as we worked and cleared the incredible acampment that was, these folks from the Trails End Trailer Park brought to us. It just is too much. And it really is something that can't exist anywhere in the city. And we do, did have testimony about the dangers of the staff cleaning it up. So I have questions about this particular ordinance. So I have questions about this particular ordinance, but they aren't sufficient for me to vote no, because what we really need is the ability of the people that have to do this very difficult work to do it throughout the city on public property. It is, and the question of keeping those possessions, I believe the 48 hours is sufficient. Up and down the creek, and I hope, I assume, when this is enacted into ordinance, it'll be at other sites that are pretty quiet, off the beaten path, we'll be erecting those signs that tell those people, "You can't do this here." So there's no question about it. So I do have concerns about the direction to the court, and as well as the fact that we look at the personal property aspect. But overall, I believe that it's, it is definitely a step in the right direction and continuing steps that we have to make. And certainly, when we look at the budget in the not-too-distant future, I think we're going to have to acknowledge that it's costly. And hiring people to do it is not easy. So I think we should go ahead and pass this on second reading, and I believe that we've covered most of those issues. But it's just really difficult for all of us to face up to this human tragedy, so. But I don't think we can let a human tragedy be a problem to a neighborhood or a business. We all have to abide by the law. Thank you.
Dr. Rainey.
Mr. Mayor, I, if you go to page six, line F, and I think this was alluded to, but my colleagues on Public Service can correct me if my memory is failing, but it talks about in case of emergency abatement, we have to, the city has to retain any possessions for 48 hours, and if it's not, if somebody can't confirm ownership or doesn't claim it, then we can dispose of it. I think if I remember, Mr. Fountain testified at Public Service that we really don't have a place or any provision for storing things like that for 48 hours. So perhaps, I don't want to lengthen the meeting, so perhaps he can address that to us in an email, and if any of you want to keep that or delete it, you can let us know, and we can address it on Monday in Public Service. The other thing is, I, in listening to the test, listening to the discussion in Public Service last week, the, one of the rationales for doing this was addressing the 36-hour softball tournament and the cleanup at Absaraka area during Frontier Days. And in listening to, as I said, Mr. Sanchez said that they've already taken care of that in the contracts. So as a result, I had voted against it. But then in talking to Mr. Sanchez and our police chief subsequent to my vote, both of them thought this would be very helpful and would clarify some of the issues and give them a little more effective means of dealing with this. So I will vote for it tonight and urge the rest of you to support it. Thank you.
Other comments from the governing body? Hearing none. We're on second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number 21, ordinance first reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located north of Cheyenne Street and west of and adjacent to Ridge Road.
We'll send this one to the Public Services Committee.
Number 22, ordinance first reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of MR, medium-density residential, for land annexed to the city of Cheyenne, located north of Cheyenne Street and west of and adjacent to Ridge Road.
This one will also go to the Public Services Committee.
Ordinance first reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of AG agricultural for land being annexed to the city at Lot One, Block One, North Range Substation, Laramie County, Wyoming, located south of Happy Jack Road, west of Brunswick.
We'll send this one to the Public Services Committee.
Ordinance first reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of AG agricultural for land located northeast of the intersection of West Allison Road and Waltershide Boulevard.
This one will also go to Public Services.
Ordinance first reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from Plan Unit Development, PUD, ordinance number 4274, to NR3, Neighborhood Residential, High Density, for land located north of West College Drive, south of West Allison Road, and west of Waltershide Boulevard.
This one will go to the Public Services Committee.
Ordinance first reading, amending Section 10.12.020 of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, clarifying that failure to maintain liability coverage is a jailable offense.
This will also go to Public Services Committee.
Number 27, resolution authorizing a one-time payment from fiscal year 2024 budget savings given to full-time and permanent part-time employees of the city of Cheyenne, excluding elected officials and employees of the Cheyenne Board of Public Utilities.
All right, this is an opportunity for us to reward our employees for their hard work to save a bunch of expenses over the last couple of years in our budget. And so we'll go out to the audience, Mr. Lloyd, if you want to start us off.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Seth Lloyd. I'm an employee of Cheyenne. I work with the Employee Advocacy Group. I would note that this is definitely an appreciated step, but we are also still looking to make up lost ground that happened with the extensive inflation that occurred in the last few years. And a COLA or Cost of Living Adjustment would definitely be appreciated. I do understand the various budget difficulties that the city may have to review, based especially on what the state may do during their session. But I wish that the council would take into consideration a Cost of Living Adjustment, if at all possible, during the budget period of the, when you're doing the budget for the city for this coming fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Mr. Vice, hello, welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Bill Gonzalez, Public Works, just wanted to say on behalf of all the employees that I speak to, a great big thank you. That's all.
Bill, you got your snowplows ready to go?
We have them ready to go.
Because I got a feeling we're getting close.
And you're going to come for a ride this year.
Last time I asked for a ride, we got 36 inches of snow, and the damn snowplows wouldn't work, so. Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience? Hearing none. Dr. Aldrich.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt an ISO move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Dr. Aldrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend by substitute date in November 21, 2024.
All right, folks, just for you guys in the audience, what this does is typically when we do a bonus for employees, they have to pay the Social Security, FICA, Medicare, all those kinds of things. We're going to gross those up so that we'll pay that part for the employees, so they'll get as much of the bonus as we can legally give them. We'll go out to the audience and see if anybody wants to speak to that. How about from the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The substitute is adopted. We're back on the main motion. Comments from the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please. Did you want to talk, Dr. Aldrich?
I just, I wanted to ask a question.
Please.
Of our Deputy Treasurer, what the total amount ended up being by the time we added FICA taxes, Social Security, and Medicare on the bonus to the initial resolution.
Through you, Mayor, through you, Mayor, to Dr. Aldrich, are you referring to the general fund or everything?
All of it.
Could you split those out for us?
Sure. The general fund would be $1,084,835, and the other funds would be $462,779.
Thank you. Dr. Aldrich?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The resolution is adopted as amended.
Number 28, resolution encouraging city staff to solicit public comment on changes to the administration of sanitation pickup locations and further directing city staff to coordinate with Univeris, Inc., to schedule a meeting before the governing body regarding the sanitation rerouting and optimization project.
All right, we'll go out to the audience. Does anybody want to talk to this resolution? Mr. Moody.
Good evening again, Mark Moody, Ward Three. I support this. Transparency and accountability is what the community wants. I can say there have been people I complain, especially in neighborhood off Nationway, about not having alley pickups. So I do think this is needed, just for educational purposes. Stayin' for questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, you stayed all night long just to have this opportunity. We appreciate you. Push your button there and identify yourself for the record.
I'm Kerry Anson. I live at 1836 Milton Drive.
Welcome, sir.
And I'm in favor of this resolution. We got a letter in the mail a week before the change happened, and just instructing us that we had to move our trash out to the, to the street. My only desire, I guess it's come before you, is just to, and along with, with Mr. Leiborn, he helped us out a little bit on this, just that we get a chance to talk about this as citizens. There's a few of us on my side of the street that this is going to be a real problem for us come wintertime, to get our trashcans down to the street. So I'm just asking that we be given the opportunity to talk as citizens. It's a service that we pay for. I think that we should be entitled to at least having our, our voices heard on the subject before. It's just as being mandated to us that we're going to have this happen in our neighborhood. And it's not just on Milton Drive, it's on a couple of other streets in that, in that neighborhood, in the East Ridge housing area. Those are older homes. They were built back in the 50s, and it really works really good for us to keep them in the alley. But I'm getting to a point in my life where I don't want to have to worry about falling going down my driveway. My driveway has an incline that's pretty much like this, and I wouldn't have to, and I know Mr. Seagrave wouldn't want to have to have a claim brought against, you know, for me falling and breaking a hip, having to take my trashcans down to the street. So I'm just asking that we be given the opportunity to share our views and to talk about this.
Sir, can you share with us what block you live on in Milton, just so we can come take a look at it?
Um, that's a good question.
Are you the 1800, 1900?
It's 18, 1836.
Okay. That helps me a lot. I appreciate you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience. You got to sit through a lot. Anybody else in the audience? All right, hearing none. Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to, Mr. Mayor, the motion to adopt failed in Public Services Committee, therefore, there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Leiborn. Comments from members of the governing body.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Leiborn.
I brought this forward, and it was, a lot of this concern came from the neighborhood that we just mentioned, that has had a lot of discussion and input from the Sanitation Department. And before I get any further, I want to say this. Over the past, I don't know, 20 years, we've seen great improvements in just about every aspect of sanitation, whether it's the licensing of the landfill and the passage of the enterprise account ordinance. They've got better equipment, they're, a better opportunity for us to look to the future of our waste disposal, so I'm definitely not a critic of the department. But the way that this has come about is when these individuals get a letter, and the letter says, "Dear valued customer," it doesn't also say captive customer, because we are captive customers. We have to buy that service. That's, I don't really have a, a big problem with that. And I can tell you that in my neighborhood, and which has significant differences from some others, those streets are laid out in a, in a grid, and the alleys are laid out in a grid exactly the same. So the question of the delivery of the service, I believe, should be evaluated on the basis of the, the fact of what those people want to pay for and what they want to receive, and have an opportunity to take a look at that, so that we don't go neighborhood by neighborhood and saying, "Well, it doesn't work here, it's going away, it's going away." I think it needs to be looked at comprehensively. I know other people have different ideas, and I appreciate the fact that that route optimization is going to be coming before us in a work session, but obviously, there's, I believe there's good reason for us to talk about the services we provide, how convenient they are, and how that system works. So I appreciate the opportunity to raise the issue, and I'm sure we'll be discussing it more in the future. Thank you.
Dr. Aldrich.
I wanted to say, Mayor Collins, through you, that I think anytime we can solicit information from our community members, and especially those that have had concerns, we've, over the last four years, I have heard from residents in the Henderson area that have been moved to the front street, and also some that have been able to maintain their service in the, in their alleyways. But I also saw a video today that Director Nemechek sent that I think was a challenge for anybody trying to get through an alleyway with some of the turns and the angles. So I look forward to the discussion and would encourage my colleagues to vote for this resolution.
Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, I believe one of the reasons we voted not to support this in committee was the report that's referenced is not the right, right, there is no report. However, I do believe that the communication portion of it deserves merit and, and should have some type of, some type of a meeting to discuss. You know, when folks are used to a system for decades, and that's the testimony we've heard, and they are of a senior nature, not that I would know what that is, sometimes it's difficult to move trashcans from, from the backyard alley to the front yard when you don't have a driveway or a sidewalk, particularly during the winter. And when they are captive, when we don't, don't allow them to seek other, other services from other vendors that perhaps can manage the alley, or maybe we'd need a different piece of equipment to go in on these specific alleyways. I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's worth discussing. And so maybe we need to offer them some type of service to compensate for, for the changes we're making. So I think we need the discussion. I'm not sure the report reference, there is no report, so, so that, that kind of struck it down for me. But I would be in favor of the, of the discussion with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Royble?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Johnson? Go ahead.
So I guess if Director Nemechek can come up here, I just have a question on the whereas is, where it has a date of complete its work honor before January 31 of 2025. So, and it says, according to the public, or excuse me, professional services agreement, so was that already contractually written in there that they had to complete the work by that date? Where did that date of January 31, 2025 come from?
Mr. Nemechek.
At Vicki Nemechek Public Works, that, through you, Mayor, that is a contract requirement, that they complete the work by January 31. The seven, the January 31 also is just when they wanted to set up a work session, which has already been done.
Okay. And then, so in regards to the Univeris, so when this public meeting happens, is it just going to be the Public Works Department that's present in regards to public comment, or is a representative from Univeris going to be there as well?
Mr. Nemechek.
Through you, Mayor, Univeris was not asked to do anything with container placement. I don't think it would be appropriate to have Univeris there.
Okay, that, that's fair, because I figured they probably wouldn't be, and everything would go through you. So I mean, does this postpone, because it's currently December 9th, does this, you know, extend anything in regards to, because it's only like really about a month away to set up, especially during the holidays? January will have like about two weeks, you know, to set up a public meeting in regards to have this conversation with the neighbors. So does, with what we're doing here, does it impact anything on the contract that we approved, according to this, back in Jan, or excuse me, in May 13 of 2024?
Through you, Mayor, no, it does not. Univeris has the project- Through you, Mayor, no, it does not. Univeris has, the project with Univeris has nothing to do with the location of containers.
Okay. So the way that this reads, though, it appears that that was kind of what their assignment was. So what is Univeris actually doing for us?
Ms. Nemechek.
Through you, Mayor, sanitation rerouting and optimization, which we wrote in RFP 4-24, had two tasks: to provide new optimized routes and to integrate those new routes into FleetMind. FleetMind is our software system that will do, takes you through the routes address by address, basically. And it also provides video of what's going on in that truck all the time. There's about six, at minimum, six cameras on each truck. It makes, so what this optimization and rerouting project, it does is it makes the routes more efficient. It saves time and money. It moves us to a 410 schedule, Monday through Thursday, and it allows us to do, to provide better holiday service by implementing a sliding schedule. So what that means is if your pickup date is on a Monday, and you, if we're working a 410 schedule, your container would be picked up on Tuesday. Tuesday's pickup would be done on Wednesday. Wednesday's pickup on Thursday. And Thursday's pickup on Friday, instead of the before and after Saturdays that we've been doing that create all kinds of havoc because people forget to put their containers out.
And so because of...
Ask your questions.
Yeah. So in regards to the resolution, so with Univeris, because I would trust the drivers actually more seeing these alleys, so would the drivers actually consult on this? Since they're the ones that drive the routes and see how these alleys truly are? Because I can get where it's disenfranchising an individual that's had that route for 30 years, where they went and either had an alley or, you know, you know, or a front pickup. But I would imagine that the most educated person on this would most likely be the driver of the truck that has to navigate this daily.
Ms. Nemechek.
Through you, Mayor, that's absolutely correct. The drivers are the ones submitting these concerns to our foreman and manager at sanitation. And then we, the manager and the foreman go out, take a look at it. They document the problems that are in that, that exist in that alley. You all received that email that I sent that Dr. Aldrich talked about with showing the turns in that alley. With our existing equipment, it makes it very difficult to get through there. And our drivers are very appreciative when they don't have to deal with those kinds of situations. That alley, when you, when you drive through it, to get in, to get out, is a problem. Blind turns, trees on both sides, a Y at one point, concrete walls, trees. It's, it's really very difficult to to get through. What, the Alley Street Project that we started, we started in 2018, in April of 2018. We did, at that time, emailed the council members, and we did some media releases that notified the public about the problems that we were having and that we were looking at, one, moving all the containers to a single place, either the street or the alley, just for efficiency's sake. And, I mean, we talked today about environmental conditions with the editorial board, and that was one of the things that that came up, was do we want to drive up the street and down the alley? The majority of the containers on Milton were on the street. There were some that were in the alley, but we, we chose to move them to the street because the majority were already in the street and because of the concerns that we have accessing the alley and those containers.
My last question is, just going off of the last meeting, that what I believe the mayor said to the Greens when they brought this up under public comment, isn't, can't you just call to the transfer station to make arrangements if you require special services on a specific pickup? I thought that you can actually do that, or is that not true?
Ms. Nemechek.
Through you, Mayor, we have a program called Special Attention.
Right.
Anyone who is not able to move their containers to the street, that Special Attention program, it's included in our FleetMind. It will notify the driver that they need to stop the truck, get out of the truck, go and pick up the container, take it to the truck, empty it, and then return it. And we do that complimentary. We do not charge for that service.
Yeah, that's what I thought I remembered. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Escobal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, along the brochure, it says that they have to have a doctor's note. And then how many people are taking advantage of that?
Ms. Nemechek.
Through you, Mayor, we have currently 178 people on Special Attention. They do have to have a doctor's note, and that came, we actually added that to our ordinance about three years ago, if I'm not mistaken. We had 600 Special Attention services to provide, and we realized that maybe we needed to have a way to get those, to sort those people out and get the people off that didn't belong on anymore, or get new people on. So we said, you just require a doctor's note. They can fax it. They can carry it. They can do however, however they'd like to deliver it. But we just require a doctor's note saying that there, that plus there's not an able-bodied person in the household.
Thank you. Dr. Rennie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regard to the resolution, as my colleague from Ward Two stated, there really is no report to discuss. It is a product that is given to us to determine how to best structure routes, if they're going to, if we're going to switch to 410s. And it's not, and the deliverables aren't even due till the end of January. So first of all, I think this resolution is a little bit premature. We've already been told that that there's been a request for a work session in January to go over the change in schedules. So I think a portion of this has already been taken care of. The other, as far as public comment is concerned, I think that we're, well, first of all, I think that the, the Univeris product and placement of garbage cans is conflating two issues that really are not at all, at all the same. I mean, they do, they're, as our director just said, that the Univeris product has nothing to do with placement of where the cans go. So in view of the fact that, and also as far as public comment is concerned, I think we already know what the public comment's going to be. Those that are affected by this aren't necessarily going to like it, and we've already heard from many of them. So I guess I'm, in a roundabout way of saying that I think that much, although I agree with the first three whereas's, I think that we have, the deliverables aren't even due till the end of the, end of January. I think the resolution is conflating two separate issues, and we already have a work session scheduled to, to address this to some extent. And so as a result, I did not support this in committee. We will not vote for it tonight.
Dr. Aldrich, do you want to speak again? Dr. Aldrich.
Okay. Mayor Collins, through you, I just wanted to, if I remember correctly, we, this four, the 410-hour work schedule is something that we addressed in this year, in the budget. And that was presented when the budget request was done for public work. So I think that that, that's kind of a, an issue with Univeris. It's already been decided, is my understanding. And that this optimization project and rerouting is built on the, that assumption that we're moving to that 410-hour work week for our staff. So I, while I, I understand Dr. Rennie's concerns about that there actually is not a physical report and that the work product isn't due until the end of January, I'm wondering if there might be the possibility for some amendments or to perhaps table this and for two weeks while some of the whereas's and things can be resolved.
Dr. Aldrich, I think if somebody just asked for a public hearing, we would do that. But no one asked me. They just wrote a resolution, and they conflated issues. So if you guys want to do that, let's vote this down. Somebody asks me, we'll schedule a public hearing, and we'll do it. I don't think we have to write resolutions for everything. You just got to pick up the phone, write me an email, call and ask, talk to Dr. Aldrich. We'd be happy to handle these things just like that. There's no need for this kind of effort. Any other comments? Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I, I really do support some type of public session to communicate this to our residents. I think a lot of confusion was created. In the letter that was sent out, I received many, many emails from folks residing in neighborhoods throughout Ward One. I communicated with Director Nemechek. She provided a very detailed explanation on what the letter truly is, what it does, what it does say, what it doesn't say. Once I communicated that message to many of those residents who communicated me of their concerns about this, that seemed to alleviate those concerns. So I, I'm, I'm very supportive of some type of public engagement about this. My colleague from Ward Two referenced the work session. We don't take public comment at work session. So I don't know that that really satisfies the public involvement that that I'd like to see with this. I do want to, again, compliment Director Nemechek. I know you spoke directly to one of my constituents in the avenues earlier today. And after that conversation, that person was, was very satisfied with the explanation. But there are still a lot of folks who are very confused by the letter that was sent out. And so any type of communication that we can, that we can make to, to clear things up, so to speak, I would be supportive of.
Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, I realize that we do not take public input at work sessions, but those of you that are in Ward One, I am sure have received a lot of emails on this, just as Councilman White just said. And I'm sure you can represent them and ask many of those questions at that work session. If we don't get some kind of understanding that we're, that we can, you can relate to them, we can always have, as the mayor said, have a public meeting of some sort.
Any other comments for members of the governing body? All right, hearing none. Motion is to adopt. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
May I see the hands of the nose. Mr. White, Dr. Aldrich, Dr. Rennie, Mr. Seagrave, Mr. Cook, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Royble, Mr. Escobal. The resolution fails. Next item, please.
Next item is number 34A on page six. Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Cheyenne and the Laramie County Board of Commissioners to Allow the County to Continue to Review and Inspect Active Development Applications and Permits in Areas Annexed by the City.
Well, as we've done a lot of annexations over the years, what we're finding is we're going to have some situations where the county has already started a building permit, and the city's not taking over. And it seems unfair that we would ask them to go to a new set of regulators during that process. So this MOU allows the county to continue to finish that building permit till the end. And then once the area is annexed, then anything new development would come through the city's process. And so we have an MOU to do that. And we'll go out to the audience, see if anybody wants to speak to that. Mr. Feiler, you really are a warrior tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. Lee Feiler, 1215 Medley Loop. On that, that MOU, it's, I love it, first off. But there, I think there's, there's a part missing in this MOU, and that would be land use. So right now, Laramie County allows temporary land uses along with your building permits. So what would happen is somebody, you know, gets the temporary land use, they have their building permits, they start building, and then the city annexes. But now you don't have a permanent land use through the county. So now the city would have to take that over. So the, pretty much the county could go all the way through on the building side, the building permit side. But at the final permanent land use, you can't really get a CO at the very end of that without a permanent land use. So I think that's one piece that's actually missing in this. I'm actually working on some legislation to help with that. And the reason why I say this is because this is affecting me right now. I have a pretty big project, large projects cost me quite a few millions of dollars right now. And then we had a meeting the other day to go from our temporary to our permanent land use and have our planning meeting with the county. Well, the city was involved with that meeting because, and I didn't speak on it, it was some property you guys annexed in North Range. You know, but the city did annex that, and it's leased property. I don't own it. But it come to the realization that now, you know, there might be a whole lot of extra costs it's going to cost me in order to get my project complete.
So, Mr. Feiler, when you say it's temporary, is it temporary permanent? Is it temporary permanent use? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, it's, it's called a temporary land use permit, is what it's called, Mr. Mayor. And what it does is allows somebody to get a temporary land use without having to go through a whole bunch of bureaucratic stuff and be able to get a building permit a lot quicker to start breaking ground on a project. But what, what happens is after the project is complete, and you've fulfilled all your permit requirements as far as the building permit, you have 120 days from that point to make sure you get all the other processes done to get a permanent use.
Sure. Kind of like a temporary TCO or something like that. I understand. Okay.
It is. Yeah, but I, but that's, that was the hiccup in the meeting the other day. And I do have, I do have a meeting with the city, I believe, Wednesday, to see what some expectations are there. But I, I just think that that right there holds up, it could hold up a development pretty hard. Going from a temporary to a permanent use and with an annexation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Feiler. Anybody else in the audience or online? Hearing none. Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, this item was reviewed under other items for, for the agenda on the December 3rd, 2024 Public Services Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions of Title II of City Code have been met. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move to, I move to amend by substitute dated December 4th, 2024.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. All right, we have a substitute before us. But really, all that substitute does is it's just the, the county attorney rewriting some of the things that our city attorney did in county attorney speak. So it really didn't have any substantive differences, just they like a different way of saying the same thing. So if anybody in the audience wants to speak to that, we're good. But if not, we'll move on. Okay. Anybody from the governing body?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Collins, through you, I'm just curious. The way this reads is that the memorandum of understanding between the City of Cheyenne and the Laramie County Board of Commissioners to Allow the County to Continue to Review and Inspect Active Development Applications and Permits. So if they've granted one of those types of permits, isn't that covered under this MOU that it would be able to be continued?
Ms. Boster or Mr. Bloom?
Mayor, members of council, Charles Bloom, planning and development director. If it is a process that has been initiated by the county, and it's one that is continuous and moving forward, then yes, it would be covered under the agreement. But if it is something that's just a permit or an application, where you make an application, and then it has an end date, then any new applications would have to fall into line with city ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
We're on the amendment. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the substitute is adopted. We're back on the main motion. Comments from the governing body.
Mr. Seagrave. Is this time sensitive at all? Is there, could, could it be delayed for two weeks while this meeting occurs?
Mr. Seagrave, we annexed North Range Business Park tonight. We will do the publication in the next couple of days. But we have a Microsoft building permit. And in order for the county to continue to do that, we probably do need to, to get it moved forward tonight. Otherwise, I'm not sure how we would, how the county could do that inspection without it.
How do we, how do we handle the concerns from Mr. Feiler?
I don't know. We think we're going to have to sit down and have coffee and figure out how we're going to move forward on it. I, I don't know. But I don't, staff is willing to, to work with them. Mr. Bloom, did you want to follow up on that, sir?
And the chair, Mayor, members of council, yes, again, if it is a permit that has been initiated under the county, it should not be an issue under this present MOU because it would be one that we would just continue. So we'll have continued discussion with the county on that. And we'll also have continued discussion after the pre-application meeting on Wednesday to see where they stand today.
Mr. Seagrave, the reason we brought it up under other items for the agenda on Wednesday because we really have to get it done tonight because we're worried about the Microsoft... Microsoft. They, they have a data center under construction, we need to make sure we can continue to keep them on schedule.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, I just, if he's got an existing project, I don't want him to be penalized by this, so I guess we'll have to support it tonight, but I want to make sure Mr. Feiler's not injured.
Understood, sir. Agreed. Anybody else in the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The MOU is approved as amended.
Next item is 37A on page 7, voucher report.
All right, is there anybody in the audience or on the governing body that would like to speak to the vouchers? Hearing none. Next item, please.
Other business?
All right, is there anybody in the audience who want to speak to us under other business Sat there all night, Mr. Sanchez, just for this moment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Jason Sanchez, Community Wrecking Events. On behalf of the Community Wrecking Events Department, I just want to say thank you for your support and passing the, the bonus for the employees. We're truly grateful for your thoughtfulness and your generosity, and this helps boost morale and, and retention, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Nice to hear that.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak under other business? All right, hearing none. How about from the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we will be having council and coffee on December 21st from 9 to 11 at Dos Bog, and that's always an opportunity to visit with council members and to share concerns or ideas.
Mr. Rebl? Oh, Mr. Johnson?
Okay, so after the way that the oversized vehicles went, when I read the lady's email, she's already left, she pitched her idea tonight in regards to a compromise. And so when I thought about this in regards to what she wanted to do, I, you know, I kind of alluded to her tonight that it was be, would be a future council's decision on how much they want to get involved in the private sector versus, you know, a public land. But I did come up with an idea, kind of like what I pitched at our last goal session in regards to, you know, landfill areas that we had found amongst the community that could not support any really structures, but could actually support a parking lot. Because when we were originally looking at the, at the racetrack, you know, the, mostly we're looking at the containers and things that were not weight bearing in case of sinkage, but the racetrack could actually, you know, be built. But because we do have several city properties out there that cannot be built upon, with the exception of just like a road or a parking lot like that, it might be something that, you know, the future council wants to look into in regards to if all of a sudden it becomes a shortage, even after the new opening of the I-25 one, that if this governing body wanted to actually look at this as a revenue, future revenue stream, someplace that can accommodate the, you know, the parking, if we wanted to get into that business, then, you know, that's a discussion, but it was an idea I had, you know, to kind of pursue the compromise that she brought forward.
Anyone else? Hearing none. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.